Come back into regular session. Mike, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure. Please, everybody stand, place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have anyone, I do not think, do we?
No.
Okay, we do?
Right, that he did.
Oh, he feels uncomfortable about doing that. Do you want to do it?
I never feel uncomfortable about bringing it.
Please, alright, well then, he's going to pray.
Thank you, Brother Tom. Father, we gathered together today, Father, for your wisdom and your guidance. We thank you for the men and the women that are so concerned and in love with this great city that you created. Give us wisdom and insight to make wise choices that will reflect your love for creating this great city and the great people that live in this city. We ask for your guidance again, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, the city's attorneys report.
Okay, first, a quick closed session report. The city council met in closed session to discuss real property negotiations for the property identified as certain lots located at the Ridgecrest Business Park. The city council received a report from agency negotiator Gary Parsons, and no reportable action took place. The city also met in closed session to discuss labor negotiations with the UFCW Golden State Number Eight Union and received a report from the negotiator Dennis Spear. Again, no reportable action took place. In addition to that, Madam Mayor, I want to quickly update the city council regarding the course of discussions regarding the formation of a joint powers authority for purposes of a groundwater sustainability agency. And I just wanted to let you know generally that it's moved forward. We're at the stage now where the attorneys have been meeting in order to kind of wordsmith the language in the agreement that forms the agency, so it's moving along. There's been general agreement, I think, between all the parties on the shape it's going to take, and I don't anticipate at this point that there's going to be any issues holding it up. Our current schedule is to have that agreement put in front of you next month, I believe, for review. There's also going to be a public meeting coming up. Madam Mayor, what's the date of that?
It's the 15th, from 5:00 to 7:00 here at City Hall, and it will be televised, and we invite everyone to come.
I think one of the purposes of that will be to discuss the language of the JPA agreement, so that will be vetted, I guess.
But we will not make any decisions until it comes back to council. We will just be discussing.
Correct.
Do I understand you correctly?
Right.
What's being discussed?
Yeah, my plan remains as it was when we started, which is unless we have a substantive policy decision that we need to weigh in on, you know, it's better to approve it all as a single package in the form of the agreement. So we'll be bringing it back in agreement form, hopefully at the beginning of May, first meeting in May. Madam Mayor, that concludes the report.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Whitnick, you are there. You have asked in the past, and I neglected, to respond to a request you have made all along, and so you have asked for us to announce when one council member or another is not here, and last time I did not do that. I'm announcing that Lori is not here because of illness. So, that for the record, thank you. Alright, now, presentations. A presentation of our proclamation to Bob Peoples and representing the International Community Day Working Group, recognizing the month of April as Jazz Appreciation Month. And so if you all would join me at the podium, and we're going to have Councilman Thomas make the presentation, so please come up and join us.
It is with great honor to present this proclamation for the city of Ridgecrest of California for the Jazz Appreciation Month of April 2016. Whereas jazz is an original American art form that affirms the noblest aspiration of our nation's character, individual discipline, and innovation, whereas jazz has produced some of America's leading culture orders, artists, and ranks as one of America's greatest exports to the world. Whereas jazz has inspired dancers, artists, photographers, choreographers, poets, knowises, novelists, filmmakers, classical composers, and diverse music. Whereas art, education, and appreciation for the contributions of all American art form is fundamental to the people of the city of Ridgecrest. Jazz heritage deserves to be appreciated and broadly as possible and should be part of education of both American children and American adults. Whereas jazz has spoken of our freedom for people of the United States and abroad, and has become an international language that bridges differences and bridges people in all races, ethnicity, nationality, heritage, culture, ages, and backgrounds together. We honor and recognize the outstanding contributions of all jazz artists, educators of the city of Ridgecrest. Now herefore, be it complained, be it proclaimed, the mayor and the city council of Ridgecrest, California do hereby claim and proclaim that April 2016 is Jazz Appreciation Month for the city of Ridgecrest.
I wish for Evelyn, I wish for Evelyn Boudal, who represents the queen for International Community Day celebration on September 16th, to receive this. Okay?
It'd be my honor.
Thank you so much.
That's now. Thank you. Would you like to have word?
(laughing).
It goes with the certificate of appreciation.
Perfect, thank you so much.
You can do it.
Thank you. We are very thankful for this certificate. We hope that Ridgecrest continues to be a part of this. We hope that Ridgecrest can continue to be like part of jazz and culture to many other counties. Thank you.
Can you hold it up?
Of course. Do you want to open it?
Yeah. And you were the Marty Brockley.
Right. Thank you so much.
The next item on the agenda is the presentation of the Public Works Quarterly Report, and Dennis Spear will present this staff report.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, yes, tonight I will report on the Public Works Department. And first of all, as you're all aware, there are six divisions in Public Works. There are five of those divisions are operational divisions. Those divisions consist of the Engineering Division, Streets Division, Fleet, Wastewater, and Transportation. In terms of the Engineering Division, their activities include planning, estimating, design, preparation of bid documents, project management, final map and plan checks, inspections. They act as liaison with the Kern Council of Governments, with Kern County, and with Caltrans. Current activities include the oversight of the corp yard construction, the bus garage, the Walmart project, and supervision of multiple street projects, and coordination in the grant applications. The Streets Division, it provides maintenance, repair of street sweeping services for 262 miles, curb miles of streets, which is approximately about 127, 128 centerline miles within the city. And their activities include the repair of infrastructure such as curbs, gutters, sidewalks, drainage systems, signs striping, and painting. Presently, it's preparing to begin the 2016 paving season. The activities in advance will be prepping the streets for micro-surfacing and microsealing, and their activities will include pothole patching and crack filling. In terms of street maintenance, there are a range of treatments in maintaining a street, and this ranges between preservation and reconstruction. Funding varies with the type of treatment. Measure L dollars are primarily for preservation. TAB dollars can include resurfacing. Program dollars are for when we're talking about reconstruction of new streets. In terms of PMS, or Pavement Management System, it's not a suggestion, it's a mandate. The federal government mandates that the states adhere to and follow a PMS strategy, and that responsibility is placed on the local government through the local agency state master agreement. So by signing that agreement with the state, we're bound to follow a pavement management system strategy as well. And then, this is an excerpt from the Federal Highways Administration from a memorandum as to their singular definition, I guess, of why pavement preservation is important. It says, "Pavement preservation represents a proactive approach to maintaining our existing roadways and highways. It enables the transportation agency to reduce costly, time-consuming rehabilitation and reconstruction projects and the associated traffic disruptions. With timely preservation, the city can provide the traveling public with improved safety and mobility, reduce congestion, and smoother, longer-lasting pavements." Now, what they don't tell you is though the federal government does give us money for our RSTP, our TIP, or CMAC, the various programs, the federal government does not give us any money for street maintenance, per se. PMS procedure. The way the pavement management system works is you begin with the study. You either have your own folks, or in our case, we use consultants, to go out and study every segment of a street in the city. They come back, and from the results of their study, there is an evaluation that's produced for the various streets. They categorize the streets, they assign strategies to the various types of categories, they determine the costs, they compare the available funding, and then they rank the projects per category as far as to determine which streets would be able to receive street maintenance funding. Purpose of PMS is it justifies different funding level requests, it provides information to make efficient use of available resources, it produces quantified and accurate information, it tracks pavement performance, it identifies current, future maintenance rehabilitation needs, it selects cost-effective repair strategies, it predicts future pavement condition based on different budget scenarios. In terms of preservation, preservation really is your maintenance, and what that means is it means stopping problems before they grow. It means maximizing the life of the pavement structure by protecting it. Regular applications of preservation methods are needed. This also means quality assurance systems are in place, that you're following pavement management system studies. And despite the, I guess, repeated declarations, if you will, it's not the worst first. When you're doing pavement maintenance, and you'll see this in a couple slides, it's you're trying to preserve your best streets so that they don't fall into a situation where they need complete rehabilitation or reconstruction. And, well, actually, it's the next slide. This is one method as far as categorizing your streets after you've had a, after you've actually done a pavement management system study. And this is one of the simpler methods. They also have decision trees and different types of methods of categorization. But this is a simple form, and what it indicates there is the higher ADT, which is actually AADT, your annualized average daily traffic, and the higher your PCI, which is the condition of your roadway, if your roadway's in great shape and you're, it's a heavily traveled road, then it goes into category number one. And it goes all the way down to category number 15, where you're talking about AADTs of less than 100, and PCIs of less than 40. And the way that would work is, I mean, and it might seem counterintuitive, but you're trying to preserve those streets that are well-traveled and that are still in good shape. And so you don't, whatever your money is that you have for your pavement maintenance that year, you start, you place all the streets that qualify and category number, are eligible for category number one, put them there, and then in two, and then three, and four, and on down. But when you look at the amount of money you have for street maintenance, if you can only go one through six, those are all the streets that you're going to be able to apply some sort of maintenance to in that particular year, and the other streets would further deteriorate.
Mr. Spear, are you taking questions during or after?
Well, actually, you know, I didn't put in a question slide, but you may feel free to ask questions.
We'll wait till afterwards.
Well, it might be easier, though, if it's one on a specific slide. It's probably easier while we go, and I won't have to go back.
Okay, I'm just questioning, I understand why not the worst first, because you want to maintain those, but what if the worst is a well-traveled street?
That'll be indicated later, but that's when we have to go.
Okay, never mind, then I'll let you go.
That's when we have to use money such as TAB, where we don't have the constraints, or where we're going after program money through Kern Council of Governments for either R-TIP money, S-TIP money, F-TIP money, money that comes from outside.
Okay, I won't interrupt you then, thank you.
And that's what's for reconstruction projects.
Okay.
And this kind of identifies why, this is our pavement life curve, and as long as you're dealing with streets that are in good condition, and as long as you're maintaining them, you can do that, and this is relatively speaking, but they're showing you everything above a PCI of 70, you're able to maintain it. For instance, they're suggesting at a dollar, but once you start dropping to a 40, it's going to cost you five times as much if you haven't been maintaining and keeping your streets in repair above that 70 PCI level. And that, I didn't switch that, but I switched. Let me see. And so the maintenance methods that we utilize, we have pothole repairs, we have crack sealing, we have slurry sealing, we have sand sealing, chip sealing, and now you're really getting into major maintenance when you start with your overlays, and then you have resurfacing, and you have reconstruction. And then, there is, and we've been using this quite effectively and quite cost-effectively for at least the last five years, there was an alternative method that was introduced in our city over five years ago now, but it's relatively new in California, I'd say it's been used for less than 20 years, and that's micro-surfacing. And what it is, is it's a slurry seal, it's where you introduce aggregates into advanced emulsions, it produces a stable product, it could be placed in multiple layers, and it's not proprietary. And just, I guess, a footnote on this is, I found out about it at Lega City's Public Works Officers Institute probably seven years ago, and it was a presentation by a combination of the city of Santa Barbara and the county of Santa Barbara, and they had shown how they were so far behind the curve as far as maintaining their streets, their PCIs had all dropped well below 40. There was nothing in their budget, or nothing that they could see in the future that would help them improve their PCIs. And Australia had been using this micro-surfacing method for years, and they looked into it, and the city of Santa Barbara combined with the county of Santa Barbara, and they had, within about three years' time, had not only been able to surface the majority of their streets, but they'd also come back and increased their PCIs. Now, it's going to take time, but they decided that over, I think it was a 10- or 15-year period, they'd be able to be improving all their streets and maintaining them at a level above a 50, 60 PCI, until they were able to actually get money through programming for reconstruction of streets that were in that bad a shape. And so anyhow, with that understanding and information that was distributed at the Public Works Officers Institute, we contacted some contractors that actually were involved in micro-surfacing, and so we experimentally, if you will, use money to pave first. The, our first project in town was micro-surfacing of the China Lake Boulevard, south of Ridgecrest Boulevard, I mean, yes, south of Ridgecrest Boulevard to Upjohn. That's where it runs in front of the Bank of America there, down to, down past Christie's to Upjohn. That was our first micro-pave project, and the, I still believe it's held out rather well for the money spent on that. And then we followed with, our second project was also a micro-surfacing, but it wasn't a micro-pave. It was Upjohn, and it was Upjohn between China Lake Boulevard and Downs. And that was done as a cape seal, which is a little, differs a little from a micro-surfacing, where you're just playing, placing your, in the case of the micro-surfacing project on China Lake Boulevard, or South China Lake Boulevard, that was done as a two-lift project, where we're, where you're actually putting the layers on. Well, on Upjohn, the contractors that visited that site said they didn't really believe that a micro paving would quite work. It needed a little more aggregate, it needed a little bit more structural strength added to it. And you can do that by a cape seal. What a cape seal is, is if you've ever driven the county roads, you'll, they often just put a tap coat down, and then right off the back of their trucks, they'll drop gravel, and then they come back over with a rubber tired roller, and they roll it on in, then they sweep it, and they roll it again, and they sweep it one more time. Now, there's still loose gravel, but the county doesn't care. They let traffic take care of that, and in about three months, they may sweep it again. Well, the problem with doing that in the city is because of the loose gravel, you get motorcyclists, you get bicyclists that complain, you get cars that will submit claims because the loose gravel will be thrown up in their windshield, and they'll be, so cities normally don't use it. But what cape seal has added is it's added the strength that the county uses, but after you put the, after you put your tap coat down, after you put your gravel down, you come back with a micro-pave on top of it, which seals the gravel so you don't have this loose gravel problem. And that's what we did on Upjohn. And except for the reflective cracking I see, I think the street itself is holding up well, except for the approaches, and we're having that, we're working on that, it was experimental. But when you see the, we're breaking within about 200 feet of the intersection, you'll start to see some of the, what they call washboarding and even rutting, and we're going to deal with that on future projects by actually going deeper down into the, through the section, instead of just the surface. Now, in terms of micro-surfacing purpose, it's an alternative to your thin hot mix overlays. It's a, it creates a structural strength, it does have good long-term wear properties because of the structural integrity that it adds, and it offers good skid resistance, and it returns the traffic quickly to the roadway, as opposed to an overlay project. And it can be, you can apply that at night when there's a lot fewer cars on the line. And where do you use micro-surfacing? You can use a micro-surfacing treatment for your arterials, for your collectors, and even your highways. And as I said, Caltrans has really only been using this. I think we beat Caltrans by probably three or four years before I started seeing them using it on the highways, and they do quite a bit of it now. And it can be used for rut filling applications, double applications, which is your lifts for surface irregularities. Again, it mentions the night work, talks about the, where you can return traffic, you know, much quicker. And then it also talks about concrete bridge decks and airports, but doesn't necessarily apply to us. And just in terms of the mixing sequence, what you have when you're actually laying it, and there's a, the last, the final slide in this series, actually will show you a truck that does, that actually completely applies, but what you have is you have your aggregates, your crushed aggregate, which adds to the strength, you have your additives, in this case, it's showing cement additive, but it can be different add mixtures as well. And then you have your polymer modified emulsion. That all gets mixed, goes into the spreader box, comes out the back, it's screeded, and that's your application for your, as far as your process. And then, what you have for a product, and there's actually a type four now, as a matter of fact, we use a type four predominantly, but there's the slurry seal, micro-surfacing systems, and they're showing you gradation sizes there, the running from 1/8 to 1/4 to 3/8, and now they have a 5/8, and that's what a type four is, and we probably use that more than a type three. And then this is, for those of you in the audience that may remember, this is how they first started sealing the streets back in the early 1900s. They actually had a one-horse power vehicle there with a car with a tank on it, and it looks like it's just kind of sturdy industrial brooms that they're using to actually spread the oil on the road at that point. And then in the 1930s to 50s, it looks like somebody got innovative and stole a mixer truck from a cement plant, but apparently that's the way it was poured back then with the single board screed on the back. And then that led to what appears to be a vehicle that actually was made for the purpose of slurry seals there in the 1960s. And then finally, you've got a 21st century truck where it's, it has all the, it can do the entire mix, the aggregate, the aggregate, the add mixture, as well as the emulsion, and it can all be done with that one vehicle. And then this here is just showing you exactly how it was performing, and this is now an approved Caltrans process, and this is what was done, if you've driven Downs between China Lake Boulevard and Upjohn, this was the process that was used about a year ago, I think, in putting that street in. And that was a micro-pave, not, it wasn't a cape seal, but it was a micro-pave. And then, this particular paving season, as far as TAB dollars, we expect to resurface or pave approximately 73 lane miles of roadway in our community, utilizing TAB dollars. And as far as measure L dollars, we intend to preserve approximately 127 lane miles. And as far as a listing of the specific streets for the measure L, these are the streets that will have, will receive attention as far as preservation techniques. I could read them to you, but this is all going to be posted on the website, unless you want me to actually read the names, and within those limits. But that's scheduled for street maintenance using measure L dollars. Then this is for resurfacing, and this will be utilizing TAB dollars. This is a list of the streets and the limits for this particular, you know, method and this particular funding source. And then, oh, and one thing that's not on there, our city engineer called it to my attention, I didn't want to say that we're spending TAB monies and show you this list without mentioning that we are going to be using TAB dollars for gateway, from Upjohn all the way up to 178 this year. That'll be done this paving season. So despite the fact that it's not on the list, that will be a use of TAB funds this year as well. And then, in terms of program projects that we have, and these are projects that are currently in the F-TIP, well, some of the projects are in draft F-TIP, but the F-TIP projects, as far as HSIP, which is the Highway Safety Improvement Program, we currently have that traffic signal at Bowman in China Lake that's going in at the, in the corner where Walmart is being constructed. And we also have the Drummond widening between Inyo Kern, or Inyo Street, excuse me, and Downs, that's ready to bid. We have received our E-76, which is our authorization to proceed with construction, and so we will be going out to bid on that. And then, we also have submitted grant application for a systematic safety analysis report program, and we're, tonight, you will be considering authorizing, or entering in to a contract with David Evans to submit an HSIP application for us for the current call for projects for HSIP. And then in terms of CMAC, the congesting management and air quality program. And then in terms of CMAC, the congesting management and quality, and air quality program, we have the current traffic signal synchronization project that's from Ridgecrest Boulevard to College Heights. That project was awarded to DBX. We have the CMAC project at North Warner, which is a street widening project that's from Drummond to West Hal. The design is complete, the right of way is acquired, it's ready to submit for authorization at this point in time. That would be authorization for us to proceed with construction. And then we have South Graff, which is, the request for authorization construct has been submitted on that. And then we have our CMAC project of South Sunland, and the distinction there, that's going to be the Sunland project, where we're going to punch that through. It's going to be a new road. It's going to be from Bowman to Dolphin, and it's in the draft, 2016 F-TIP. That means it's in the draft, and if it does get its formal approval, then it'll be a program project that we can look forward to and, next year. And then the CMAC project, they also have a CMAC call for projects, and on tonight's agenda is for a consultant to be able to prepare the application for, to respond to that call for projects. And then in terms of our RSTP projects, our regional surface transportation projects, we have South China Lake Boulevard overlay from Bowman Road to College Heights Boulevard. That's ready to bid. They, we have already received our authorization. There's one little, it's not a sticking point at all, but it's a coordination effort. We don't want to get ahead of ourselves with the Walmart project going on. We don't want to do something where we're in advance of their construction. But we, the E-76 has been authorized, so we are, we are ready to bid that. And then another RSTP project is east side of Downs for, between Ridgecrest Boulevard and Upjohn, and again, that's only in the 2016 draft F-TIP at this time. And so when, if, when that's brought into the formal adopted F-TIP, then we'll have money for that, well, half-street on that particular project. And then there is a current call for projects for RSTP, and again, on tonight's agenda, we have a request for the council to award a contract to a consultant to prepare that RSTP application. And then there's an ATP project, call for projects, the same firm is, that we're requesting that the council award a contract due for RSTP is also the, would be the consultant to prepare the, an ATP is active transportation program, actually, and to prepare the application so we can respond to that call for, for projects. And then in terms of CDBG and TDA projects, we have the CDB project for 15 ADA ramps, we have the CDB project for the senior center, we have the CDB project for ADA transition plan, ramp design, and some construction, and we have the CDB project for the senior center parking lot, and we're waiting for the county in that process. And we have a TDA project for next year. The design is in its final stages, and that's going to be the Richmond Bike Path, and that's a combination. Where we can accommodate it off-road, it is a Class 1. And where we can't do that, because of right-of-way constraints, it's going to be a Class 2 bike lane. But that bike lane will be complete from the Bowman Bike Lane where it exists, all the way down Richmond to the parking lot, or whatever they call that there in 178. And then in terms of the Fleet Division, this division services maintains and repairs over 100 city-owned vehicles and motorized equipment. Vehicles include the city's fleet of cars, as well as the transit buses. In addition, maintenance is performed on most city equipment, including the equipment used by Parks and Recreation, and Wastewater, and the Streets Division. In terms of facilities, construction update, the, if you've driven by, the bus garage and the city yard improvements, they're under construction. The bus transfer station out in Inyo Kern, which is a regional facility, the property has been purchased and it's currently in design. Wastewater Division. Wastewater Division operates and maintains the sewage collection system and treatment facility, and we do that in accordance with the WWDOs, our wastewater discharge orders, which were issued by the Regional Board in Latin. And this right here is our annual report. We submit our reports, and we actually submit our monthlies on a calendar year, unlike the fiscal year that we run our budgets on and run most of our other operations on. But anyhow, this is an excerpt from the cover letter, which transmitted our annual report in early January, which was through the end of the calendar year in December. And basically, it says that we treated 794 million gallons of influent to that facility, that we, as far as preventive maintenance, we hydroflushed over 33,000 feet of sewer main, that our contractor, Houston Harris, has performed the videoing of our entire sanitary sewer system, and that we reclaimed over 60 million gallons of effluent. And then in terms of the wastewater, this was from our annual report that was submitted in December, there, the, what you're looking at is, where you're looking at the actuals as far as the influent, but you're also looking at those actuals compared against the rated design capacity. And you can see that we're, even on a month-by-month basis, we're right there at the high 50s, low 60s, as far as where our influent is based on the design. So that's a change from several years ago, and I'll show a slide comparing that in a minute. Just keep that thought in mind, though, that you're looking at current operations at the high 50s and low 60s, based on the design capacity out there at the current plant. And then this is just a graphical representation of the same for last year, how we were doing on a month-by-month basis, based on the plant capacity. Now, this is from 2008, and you can see we were operating at the high 60s to mid 70s, as far as the, the actual influent coming into the plant versus design. And I think I've mentioned before that once you start getting consistently above 75, you'll get an NOV from your Regional Board, because they'll want to know what you're doing preparing for new plant. And I'm saying all I have to say, though, that water conservation apparently has, has had an effect, because obviously, instead of being in the, the high 60s and mid 70s, we're now down, we're now down to the high 50s and low 60s at this point in time. And then this is just the last two months of our submitals, just indicating that we're still following that same trend, where the water conservation has lowered the amount of influent to the plant, and that again is just a graphical representation. And then also in our annual report, we do, we have, we do have to address the water that's, that's reclaimed, and I think I indicated we reclaimed about 60 million gallons with the alfalfa fields, with the, from the effluent from the plant last year. Well, the wastewater, the wastewater that has been reclaimed by a separate WWDO issued by the Board to the Navy, those are the amounts on a, on a monthly basis, and that total is 144 million gallons of reclaimed water was placed on the golf course by the Navy, and that's just a graphical representation of the Navy's use there at the golf course. This is an average daily flow by month, and this goes back all the way to 2009, and to, through the last report we submitted. In red, that's the amount of influent coming in from the Navy, and in green, that's the city's flow. Now, in terms of the new wastewater treatment plant and the scope of work for the consultant currently, it was for them to prepare a facilities plan, to evaluate two-site alternatives, both a site, current site, or location at the NOS, and then also at the old, where the old treatment plant used to be on city-owned land, and to prepare preliminary plans, that would be 30% design, and to prepare an EIR considering both sites, and to prepare financial studies. Well, where they're at right now with the, with the, with their, with their work, they've completed their facilities plan, they've done their evaluation, but their EIR right now is out for, they're in the process of certifying their EIR at this point in time. The recommendation from their facilities plant was for a new wastewater treatment plant to be built to replace the present facility. The recommendation further was that it be built at, on the Navy land, that as far as the sledge process, they were recommending oxidation ditch, and their disposal, until we get to the point that, that definitely addresses whether we want to develop tertiary plant involving recycled water, they want, they obviously are saying, well, we need to continue reclaiming the water to the golf course, we need to continue our reclamation efforts with the alfalfa irrigation, and the remainers in the disposal park. But all this, and even the amounts, could change when the council makes a decision as to decide, well, first of all, I should say, don't want to put this on the council, when our consultant comes back after they complete the EIR process, and explains this once again to our council, and decisions are made. It could very well be that we're looking toward adding tertiary facility for recycled water. And then in terms of their schedule, their preliminary site selection will take place, the consultant would be returning to the council, but that will be following the EIR review out of necessity, necessarily has to follow that way. Then there would be an authorization of final design, then there would be, and they actually have done this, we've submitted the application, but until there's, until we actually know what site, with certainty, we're, we're just simply on a waiting list, found eligible at this time for our state revolving fund dollars for the plant. And then what they're doing now is they're certifying EIR, that's the process they're involved in right now. And then, well, yeah, that's for waste charge. We've already met with Wahotten. I, I and our plant operator and our consultant, we've been down to Wahotten, and they said they're very supportive, they're also very supportive of the idea of a tertiary facility, but actually, they really won't consider what the WWDOs would be for a new plant until we can tell them what site we've selected. So we'll be returning to them too after that's done. And then assuming that we maintain this schedule, and that in, by July of this year, a, the, a firm has been selected to do the final design, they would expect that by June of 2017, the final design could be completed, then they could go out to bid, receive the bids in November 2017, start construction in January 2018, and complete the construction by December 2019. And now moving, changing to the Transit Division. The Transit Division operates deviated fixed route system throughout the city of Ridgecrest. Our main funding source is the Transportation Development Act funding, or TDA, and also the STA, or the State Transit Assistant Program, as well as a good chunk of money from the FDA grants, and we have a small share from our actual passenger fares. In terms of our Transit Division and ridership, and this is only from July of last year through February of this year, we're just shy of a total of 9,000 riders. Our routes break up as Coyote, having the, the greatest ridership, followed by Rattlesnake and Roadrunner. Our Midday Express only operates part of a day, though, and it actually has pretty good numbers for the relatively short-term time that it operates on a daily basis. And then we have our county contract. This is just a summary of those same numbers at the bottom. And this is, and if you're not familiar with the routes, the Coyote ride itself serves east of City Hall and south of City Hall, and the Roadrunner route serves to the north and east and to the south and west of City Hall, and the Rattlesnake Run serves primarily to the north and west, and they all at a point, at, at, at least one of their points along the, their route. Actually, their route, part of their route is China Lake Boulevard. And the Midday Run actually, oh, it's at the bottom, I was looking for it. The Midday Run, it runs limited hours, but it actually runs from the gate, Navy Gate all the way up to Serra Costa College, and it makes intermittent stops in between. And in terms of, just an update on some of the grant funding we received, Transit Division has received money that it's currently utilizing, where it has PTVIZI money for the, and that's defined in that second sentence, it's Public Transportation Modernization Improvement and Service Enhancement Program. It's received $830,000 to contribute for the work that's being done on the bus garage in conjunction with the courtyard. It also has received $300,000 for the hub transfer station in Inyo Kern. It's received 11,500 for security enhancement, I believe that's security cameras at the courtyard. It's also received money to replace the West Gate as part of the courtyard project. It's received, it's receiving $193,000 for two, purchase of two buses. It's, oh, that, well, that's a, that's a process based on quotes in the PO. It has, it's received $6,273 for tablets for usage on the buses, so that there's communication between the dispatch and the, dispatch and the actual bus drivers. The total PTVIZI grants so far are $1.3 million. And in terms of the CalOES grants, we have, we've received $21,000 for the courtyard security alarm and lighting system. We're getting quotes at this time. We've received $23,000 for the Corporation Yard Security Camera System. We've received CalOES dollars, $21,000 for a transfer station security camera system. That, now, obviously, we're only in design, we're at the transfer station, we won't be able to utilize that money, so we're going out to construction. And then Corporation Yard Security Gate, $21,000 has been received. And then we have an application that's been submitting, and we're waiting approval for City Hall security fencing, and that would be to the, directly to the north of this particular building. And our, so our total CalOES grants are 109,000. And then our Federal Transit Administration grants, or FDA grants, we've received a operating assistance grant in 1415 for $93,500. We've, we are receiving, it's in progress, I think it's on this agenda. We're receiving, or we're having an application to receive $87,000 for operating system, 5311 now, and so our FDA grant total would be $181,446. So Transit has received a combined grant totals in the last two years of one, over $1.6 million. And that concludes the presentation. Thank you.
Lot of information. Any questions from council?
One thing that you mentioned that I think is pertinent to one of the items tonight, so I wanted to ask you about that, but you mentioned the CDBG grant for the senior parking lot, the senior center parking lot. So that, that was approved a while ago, wasn't it?
Well, right there, like, but by the time you get the application, and you approve what the project's going to be, it's about three years before we get the money. That's the delay on the CDBG money. It's about right, isn't it, Lauren?
Okay.
Yeah?
Okay.
So it almost looks like, well, I'm hearing this again, but you are really, because we're just now getting...
Deja vu, all over again. All right. Thank you.
Real quick, Dennis, you made mention of the FTIP program. Was, so that I'm clear, was that, how much funding could possibly come in?
As far as the program projects?
As far as the program?
Unless, unless I had indicated that it's in a draft or we're applying for it, that money's, we're already programmed for it. I'd actually, actually have to check to tell you what the program year is, because they program it specific years, but those are the, those projects are actually programmed. So we're in line to get the money for those streets.
Great. The other question was, in reference to that Matrix?
Oh, yes.
Presentation that you had there. Where does... Where do, where do we sit at in reference to as a city, our streets overall? Are we pretty...
You know, what I, I thought about it later, and what I probably should have done was I should have brought the APWA and ASE, Produce Annually Report Card for infrastructure on a statewide basis and on a national basis. And though our streets are bad, I think streets across the nation are rated like D+. Streets are not in good shape. Federal government has not followed through with providing adequate money for us, for us personally as far as Ridgecrest or other streets across the nation to adequately maintain their streets. And then that includes, from a federal perspective, necessary reconstruction of streets that have deteriorated to that point.
Based on some of the work that we've have done, have we, have we made any progress?
We currently have, matter of fact, they've already began, but we have, the consultant Willden is currently in the process of beginning their PMS study. The contract's already been awarded, they're doing another payment management system study right now, and I anticipate with the work that's been done, both in terms of the measure L dollars and with the TAB expenditures, not to, and not to discount some of the program projects that we've done in the last five years since the last PMS, I expect the PCI to have increased. Whether it's increased substantially, you know, I won't know, but I do anticipate that that PCI has improved over the, over what it was five years ago when the last PMS was done. Thank you.
You said that the list of streets are being done this year, that's on our website, so constituents can come look at those. Is that correct?
Well, I meant this PowerPoint, but we can, we can actually post the streets, yes, we can do that for you.
I know my son, my son lives on Mamie Street between Sherry and Sierra View. And it goes bloop, bloop. I mean, it's really bad.
Wasn't Mamie listed?
Yes, Mamie was listed, so, yes.
We're doing the reconstruction and that.
Well, we'll have to take that off of...
Because of those bumps.
We'll have to remove that then if your son lives...
Oh, by the way, did I tell you mine is going woo-woo too?
Pardon?
Humor, I hear humor. Any others? Dennis, when I'm looking at the conservation that's already been, been accomplished by the community as it reflects on our wastewater production, I see more and more being asked for and potentially be proposed, no matter what the, what you consider the drought. I'm wondering if we're, we were in the high 60s and into the, there was one, I think I saw at 77%.
Now, I do have to just make one comment on the 77. If you notice, that was July of 2008.
Yeah.
That's when the streets were four foot, four foot of water when that big cloud came over the city and down port. And in order to try and alleviate, I know that there were properties that were flooded, but to alleviate that, we popped the manholes. So the sewer system took a spike out there in that particular one month.
Okay, so we're talking about doing, and I know nothing gets cheaper as time goes along, but if we look at this as being 53 to 65, and we only, there was our capacity at this last year and with conservation still continuing, do you see us coming up any higher than that? I know you can foresee the future better than anybody, right? But I'm wondering, what do you anticipate for the future?
Well, it seems like we went down, from the, from the time the Water Conservation Ordinance was passed, it was about, the first year, we saw a market drop, the second we found, saw a market drop, but by the third year, it kind of stabilized. And so we seem to be trending about the same now, after the third year of implementation.
Okay, I would like us to potentially look at, and I know I asked last time for something, but look at, do we need to do it next year then? Is there a need for us to look at that if we are, I know we're going to spend more money if we do it, and it's going to have to be done. I would like us to look at, what is the potential need if our capacity stays the same? And I know it's not just capacity, but the conditions of the sewer. So could you address some of that somehow?
Well, I think in terms of, one of the, one of the primary impedices as far as the, the plant, wasn't just the capacity, I mean, capacity will, the regional board will force you to do something about it when you get to a certain level, but it's the age of the system. The plant is so old, it is really antiquated, and I don't think it's, actually, from a cost-effective standpoint, I don't think that you're really seeing cost-effective treatment of the water. And you definitely don't have the type of plant where you can do an add-on if you're seriously considering recycled water from a tertiary plant.
I think we are.
You would need, you would need a new plant in order to be able to add a tertiary component to it.
Yeah, I know you address capacity, but in here, you address conditions. So if we're basing the...
If you're solely basing it on capacity...
We don't need it.
You could say, well, we can use bubble gum and baling wire for the next five years, but if you're looking at the condition of the plant, the age of the plant...
Some of that plant's over 60 years old.
Oh, yes, that's correct.
I understand. Okay, is there any other, is there any other council comments?
Just one. All those different pieces of equipment to lay, what are we using?
Pardon?
What?
Oh.
I got the horse.
That's why we retain a contractor for our, our crews do the prep work, which saves us, really saves us some substantial amount of money. But the, we actually have contractors that have the equipment that, that actually do the, they do the application as far as the microservices.
I just know we have the hay, I was wondering if we also have the horse.
Yeah, the slurry in the broom, yeah. Okay, is there any public comment on Dennis's report? If you will identify yourself again for that, because Rick is here tonight, and I know Rachel knows everybody's voice, but if you would please identify yourself. Thank you.
Tom Wicknick, address on file. Dennis, did you do this report in-house, with in-house staff?
Yes, sir.
Wow.
You could also...
The informa, I'm sure Mr. Culp was involved.
Mr. Culp and Ms. Harker.
Right. Compliment, 100%.
Exactly.
The amount of information in that report, I have to just say, that is what we like to see when there's stuff going on. You know, it's $22,000 for a security camera, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The detail in this report, I just have to commend the staff and the amount of information that you have pushed off to us, the people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dave Matthews, address is on file. I have to correct something that Mr. Spears said early on, when he was talking about the different types of projects in the PMS system and so on. He said that the federal government gives us money. Well, it's not quite true, Dennis. They take our money and then they decide how it's to be distributed. And along the way, we don't get all of that money back. This is something that I've been harping on for, ever since I've been coming down here. That being said, the measure L money, however, takes a lot shorter route to get back to us. And therefore, I am pitching right now a push to reinstate the measure L funding. I have seen the results that have occurred, and I think it's, it's one of the greatest steps in the last 40 years that the city has taken. And I commend everybody that's involved, because, especially the Oversight Committee, because of the way we had it, had to get it passed, et cetera, et cetera. Now, as far as the money that comes back down to the federal and the state, where does that tax get collected initially? I think most of it comes from the gas taxes. Are there other sources?
As far as maintenance money, gas tax is our primary source. Our secondary source is TDA dollars, Article 8.
Well, now, wait a minute, TDA, that's state money, right?
That's state money, yes.
Yeah, right. Where does the state get it?
Oh, well, that's a, it's kind of like our measure L, but it's at a state level, it's part of the sales tax. They carve it out of the sales tax.
Yeah, okay. So I just want people to be aware of where this so-called money that we're given comes from. Thank you.
Sophia Merk, 2062 South Mike's Trail Road. I would like to thank Dennis Spear and his staff for a very comprehensive report. That was one of the best ones I have seen, and I really appreciate all the hard work that the staff has done. I do have some questions, though. You were going so fast on Downstreet. What is the status of the street between, on Downstreet, between Ridgecrest Boulevard and Upjohn? When is that going to be fixed?
Well, the, we're, it's actually sort of a legal issue at this particular point in time, because we have to resolve the relocation of the poles with Edison. Now, that process has been started with the council approving a payment of $100,000 for design purposes, I believe at either the last or the meeting before the last. So we paid SCE the money, we paid it under protest, however, because we, we're still working, the attorneys for Southern California Edison and our attorneys, to try and get them to understand their responsibility relocating the poles. But that's where we're at right now. The design is complete, we could bid the project tomorrow. As you probably saw in the, one of the slides, we're actually on the F-Tip, not for the entire road, but for the east portion of the road, we're on the draft F-Tip where we could get our, our funding for that half of the road through, in the F-Tip process. But we can't actually go into construction right now until we resolve this issue we have with Southern California Edison.
I understand that. I also understand that the children in Ridgecrest are our greatest asset that we have, and we can't forget them. Now, I'd like to go on to something else. I noticed that, I went to one of the meetings on the wastewater facility, when, when the contractors were here and gave their little presentation and all that, I asked to be put on the, I asked to be, you know, notified when it, when it was going to come out and all that kind of stuff. I was never notified. I also brought up the fact that I thought it would be best for it to be an EIR slash EIS. It's easier to do it that way than it is just to do it as an EIR, because you've got governmental agencies that are going to be within the scope of that. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Well, then, I think I can speak for all of us when I say, thank you, Dennis and Mr. Culp and Ms. Harker, for it was a great job, thank you. Learned a lot and understood some of it. I still want to understand all of it, so I'm working on that. Okay, the next item then on the agenda is the presentation of the TAB allocation bond funds, and that's with Mr. Parsons. I don't think you're on.
Is I?
No, you're on.
Okay, is that better? Good evening. I wish to present to you the current status of the TAB bond allocations. For those who are not aware of it, the tax allocation bonds are a redevelopment bond that was refinanced, and as a result of that, where there was an arbitrage in which the city gained some benefits, or the agency at that time, gained some benefits in income on the basis of the difference in tax and in interest rates at the time that was done. As a result, the city received, in terms of monies to expend, approximately $24,900,000. This is the amount of money. The actual bond issuance was for $34,380,000. That difference was in costs associated with the bond. So the original bond allocation was $24,900,000. Currently, and I would say currently because there's probably been two or three reallocation done by different councils, various councils, over the period of time since 2010 when the bonds were actually issued, on how the money was to be allocated. The current allocation is as follows. It's Public Works, which includes both courtyard and street and other public works activities, Parks and Rec Department is to receive 2.9 million, 2.9, 2,932,765. Economic Development is receiving $3,196,200. And Special Projects, which I will define in a second, which is various projects that don't fit into individual departments or have multiple department uses, are $6,498,924, balancing the $24,900,000. Oh, by the way, please feel free to ask me questions as we go along. I didn't include a question slide either. And I frankly didn't expect to get through the presentation without questions anyway, so. The, the next slide I show you is total, the TAB allocations, as they were presented earlier, and the current commitments of those allocations. Now, current commitments means essentially either they have a contract in place or negotiated, or they've expended money, physically expended money, and so on. In other spreadsheets, you see them as encumbrances and expenditures to date, but this just makes it easier. This is the amount of money that's committed. The first item is the Department of Finance, AMG lawsuit. Those of you who may remember, we were, I won't, I'll use a nice word instead of the word that comes to mind, but we were asked by the state of California to pay essentially $2,2992,887 on a loan that was done by this agency in AMG, who we are now currently suing the state about. And in order to get the TAB monies released, there was a requirement that we fund this $2.99 million to the state. And we, again, hopefully, that's under litigation and may receive that back, but that's obviously already spent, sent to the state. Land acquisition, this was an additional item that was additions to the, to the ballfields, and it was extra land acquisition, it was done several years ago, and it's $448,621. The Ridgecrest commercial plan, specific plan is the Walmart project. We allocated a certain amount of TAB monies for the development of infrastructure improvements and other items beyond what Walmart was required to do. And that, we have utilized some of that funds. It currently, the balance of allocated money that has not been committed is $2.2 million, That item is, is now, we're waiting for the Walmart to be completed because if we have some extra costs or miscellaneous costs, it was held as reserve so that if we had expenditures on that project, we could use that funds, they were allocated for that. If they're not utilized on the Walmart project, the staff at this point is looking at utilizing that funds for street projects in particular. I believe we're looking at the Downs and perhaps Drummond Project for that funding to get shifted to. So it would probably get shifted to Public Works. That's the plan. And of course, financial and technology upgrades. This is the computer, phone, and software upgrades for all the city operations that's being expended by our finance department in order to upgrade and get our computers done. So that's the special projects categories I was talking about, in which there's different departments or multiple departments involved. That's category number one. The, the next category, if I can get it to work, is economic development. This goes back multiple years. One of the expenditures we had early in the process is the Balsam Street Branding Project that was done through our planning department, and that one was $26,553. The Balsam Street Smith Communication, that was a branding process, and we spent $10,000 on that. We also, at one point, provided the chamber... We also, at, at, at one point, provided the Chamber of Commerce $100,000 in funds. Um, and, uh, the economic development, which is $3 million, we've committed 2.7 million 999, 92 million 799,222. The next slide, I'll detail that for you, is how that's particularly broken out. And the last item we have is the Downtown Enhancement Program, which is very similar, obviously, to the Balsam Street, and we spent $4,458 there.
Mr. Parsons, I have a question on that page. Is it okay to ask now?
Yeah, absolutely. That's what I'd like you to do, please.
Okay. You didn't give the Chamber $100,000. You paid them for services provided for four years for $25,000.
That, yes, we, that's correct.
Am I correct? I want to just make sure it doesn't go on the record as that we gave the Chamber $100,000.
No, we paid them for services for $100,000.
For services provided.
That's correct.
Okay. Because I'm thinking, if they do, I want to apply. Okay, uh, the next one.
Please do, you can be rejected, but that's okay.
The, the numbers that we, that we committed for the economic development, there's a difference of, of a considerable amount of money. I'm wondering, what, where are those extra numbers? And the same with, uh, we committed $50,000 and we paid.
The detail is on the next slide.
Okay, thank you.
So we, if we get there, maybe we can, that'll help you.
Thank you.
This is the detail for the economic development that you're asking about, I think.
Okay.
We had essentially 20, $3 million allocated. We've committed 2.2 million 799,220. Uh, basically, this is the breakout that goes for those fun, those monies. We spent 2,000, 223, 223,855 on the Cosmont Contract. That's our retail consultant that has been involved in the, that. A good share of that money was for the, the, uh, the property management plan under the, uh, requirement of the state for the, uh, um, to get the, uh, in terms of our ROPS approvals. So that was part, a good share of that money, but also, they've done retail consulting for us, as some of you are aware of, in bringing multiple retailers in town. WIDA is our industrial, uh, World Economic Development Alliance, and they are an industrial, um, consultant who we're working with on outreach for industrial work, bringing new industry into town, and, um, that's how much money we've expended to them. Protexa, EH Group, and Monarch, um, all three of those. Protexa, $875,000, EH Group at $500,000, and Monarch at, uh, $730,000, where the new startup company contracts with the council approved for, uh, funding under TAB funds, and, uh, they are in the middle of receiving, have received, except for EH Group, those funds. And then the last one is RCVB in there. In code enforcement, RCVB, the 55,000 was for the sign that they were building, so we paid them to develop our share. By the way, it wasn't the total cost of that sign, but it's the entrance sign off of 395. They're improving and making it look like a modern sign and new stuff, uh, pictures and so on for that.
Going up today.
Which is going up today, thank you. And in code enforcement, we expended for property improvements, which they've been using very successfully in relocation of trailers and other properties that are needed in order to get code enforcement accomplished. Um, so that's how we had the breakout. I don't know if that answered some of the questions you had, Mayor, earlier.
I did, I did. A couple I had. The 500,000 for EH Group, what, um, you said some of that has been distributed.
Correct. They have, the, the, the contract is different than the other groups in the sense that we have, we have given them $80,000 of that 500,000. Uh, this talked about committed, so that's contractually, we have a commitment to give them 500,000. But under the agreement we have with them, they produce a, um, a.
Feasibility?
Feasibility, thank you. Feasibility study, which is 80, $80,000. The feasibility study would then determine if it's feasible to spend, if it makes sense to spend the 420. If they choose, if they find that that feasibility study is positive, then we would go forward with the 420. If it's negative, then the 420 would stop, so we wouldn't fund that, and we'd have an extra 420. Um, and, uh, so that's where that is right now, and so that's where that one is.
It's been that way for a while.
Yes, they, uh.
Have they finished the feasibility study?
No, they, we have not received it. Um, and in fact, um, I, I expected perhaps a question in that area. If you'd like, I have, we have what we have done with all the firms involved, both Protexa, EH Group, and Monarch through the legal councils, that's the appropriate way, and the attorney to request, um, their annual certifications and audits of where they are in terms of producing employees and so on. And, um, they are required, we sent them two letters. The first letter, we didn't receive much response on the second. We sent a follow-up letter, which I have copies of, if you would like to see those letters, um, and asked them to have this in by the eighth, or we will, uh, I will come back to the council asking for, uh, requesting funding for audits of those companies that don't respond. So, uh, that's where we are, and they're due April 8th, which is the end of this week.
Is, is there a deadline on EH Group on how soon they're supposed to perform?
Um, they're behind their deadline, so that's why we're asking for, for that cert. Either the, in their case, it's either to produce the, we'll give them a timeframe to produce the report, which has already passed, frankly, and ask for the report, or we can proceed to ask for the audit in order to determine what they've done on the report. In other words, if they haven't performed and we don't receive the report, then obviously, if they don't perform and don't do that, we'd ask for the 80,000 back. Whether we get it back or not is a good question, and we probably have to litigate.
I was more concerned about the 420.
Yeah, the, uh, well, the 420, we haven't given to them. We won't give it to them.
I understand, but that'd be available for something else.
That could become available for something else.
I, I wouldn't think we'd just hold that indefinitely.
No, we won't. We won't do that. That's why we're in the process of doing the, but there's a contractual process. We've got to go through the attorney notification process, and we're trying to treat all the firms exactly the same, so we're going through it. I will tell you that, that Monarch has submitted their certification already, so we have the other two that have it. Um, and we'll be asking as of the eighth that they don't provide to, to either, you know, for audits if we have to pay money. But that costs the city money, and that's the second step and the, third step in the process. Okay? So we're following up, we're just doing it per contract.
Good. That was one of my, going to be my next question, is where are we with that? But one of the things I'd like to ask on that, WIDA, the 165,000.
Yes.
When you, um, presented us your, um, marketing program last month, last council meeting, and I asked you approximately, how much did we spend for that? I think you said somewhere in the neighborhood, you didn't have it, but you thought about 30,000.
That's correct.
Did that 30,000 come out of that 165?
Yes.
Or did we have, okay, so we got 30,000 back from the 165?
No, we haven't spent, we, it's still allocated to WIDA. The WIDA contract is for that. What I'm saying is that we have an extra 30,000 that we haven't given WIDA for this project if we choose to move forward on it. These are committed monies, not expended, totally expended. In other words, basically, you can have either a contract for that amount, or that you're committed to and signed for, or you have a, uh, spending money. In this case, we have a contract that covers that, but we haven't committed how to spend that money quite yet under the contract. We have some flexibility. Does that make sense?
I'd like to see a further report than those that we've had contracts with, and where are we with them? What have we received?
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, in terms of that, the only one on that list, obviously, would be Cosmont and WIDA.
WIDA.
That we can provide you with.
I know what we got from Cosmont.
Right.
It was really two wonderful reports, but I don't know if we got more from that.
Yeah, well, and I, I think last meeting, some controversy, but I showed you some of the stuff we've gotten from WIDA for some of that money as well.
Right.
So, okay, well, we'd be happy to provide you.
If we could do that for next.
Yeah, we can, we can give you the detailed contracts on WIDA.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. The Parks and Recs Department, moving on, if I can. They have a aquatic study was done, center study was done for, uh, 27, they allocated 26, but they ended up spending $27,000 for an aquatic center study, which, um, it was just basically the study. The LJKM Sports Complex, um, we have 338,000, 335,905 allocated, and to date, we spent essentially, or have contracts for 161,000. The 335 is still allocated for that money, that project. We just haven't finished all the projects and expenditures yet. The Parks and Rec Department, uh, Kermaghee, the majority of their money is, of course, going into the Kermaghee Sports Complex. They have $2,292,693,000 allocated for that pro, for that area, and, uh, they're in the process of design. I think we've, you had a discussion with them about that, engineering, designing, in order to get the, the building, um, plans and costs to go out to bed to spend that money. That's the intended expenditure on that. And then, uh, Parks, uh, Pearson Park and Upjohn Upgrades, we spent 42,649. And in the concession stand, that's beyond the insurance. This was TAB money committed, it was 207,636. So we have a total, uh, down there of, what, $438,19 out of their committed amounts, allocated amount spent to date. The Corp. Yard and Public Yard, and this stretches a while, so forgive me, I, I don't know if you want me to go through each project. I'd be happy to do that in terms of listing, but they're on the slide there. Transit Garage, $1 million. I'm just going to round these off. Forgive me if I shorten your presentation, uh, instead of taking a while. Uh, the Mahan Project, they spent 390, 385 on. The, uh, the Ridgecrest Match Program, this is, um, 160, 1,655,265. This is money that was allocated of TAB money to the Ridgecrest Project, Ridgecrest Boulevard Project. We haven't completely finished the project yet, um, and there's be, there, so we still have some possibility of some contingency costs in there. But the, again, the plan here is when that, when those contingency costs are done, this money would be put into the, into the Downs and, and Drummond Project. So we're, we're, it's still staying within the Public Works Group, it's just being moved from Ridgecrest Boulevard to the Downs Project.
What do we have left on Ridgecrest Boulevard? I thought that was done a long time ago.
There's, there's some, uh, some small things that, uh, and I could let Lauren answer that, or.
We've submitted our final invoice, but we have to close the project out.
I don't anticipate any significant costs there. We, I would expect the majority of that going through, but that's just, you know, what our plan is.
That, that closeout that you guys are talking about, Mr. Spear, is that also the relocation of those light poles? Or that's something totally separate, sir?
That's, that would be separate.
Okay.
Uh, the alleyway behind City Hall, you've seen some of those behind the, uh, the, uh, car wash and, and that stuff, that was repaired, uh, a while ago at 87,000. The Downs Project, again, that's, uh, the pole relocations and some other things were still, 138,552, that engineering talked about earlier. Sunland, uh, Upjohn, Bowman, 115. Drummond, 99. Uh, pole relocation, Mahan, uh, to Downs, 291. I'm just going to kind of run through these. Uh, Sunland, again, another section of it under construction, uh, was 1 million. Warner Avenue, 105. China Lake, Bowman, College Heights, 119 so far. And, uh, Mahan Ward to Graff, 147. Gateway Boulevard, Upjohn, 200. Graff Street, 53. Traffic Signal on Upjohn. Uh, synchronization, um, Gateway Road Project, 20. Richmond Road Project, Fairgrounds to East. Uh, Ridgecrest Boulevard, 409. Bowman Project to Downs, uh, to, to Pinrose, 527. Radar Street, then to Nevada Street, to Down Street, 61-4. Drummond Project, China Lake Boulevard, 153. And Street Improvement Project, 216, that was 29, 39,100. Mic, and that's, I'm sorry, I use micro paving, it should be micro servicing. Uh, it shows you I don't work in the engineering department, I work in the ED department, so it's micro surfacing streets, 3 million, uh, 100, 3 million 11,564. Pavement Management Study, uh, that's 60,000 allocated. We may or may not, I understand, use that. We may have found another way to fund that, but that's still allocated. And TAB allocation, Street Project Savings is for allocated, and they've, they not spent any of that. So to date, the Parks, the Streets Department or Public Works has got 12,200, uh, allocated, and it's spent six, 9,460,331 to date, or as allocated, committed, I should say.
And just to comment, uh, some, some, if not many, of the streets that Gary had indicated, particularly when the amounts seem to be smaller for that type of a street, that's because those were match monies that were used against programs projects.
One quick question on that one. For the, the Down Street Project, approximately, how much, uh, are we expecting we'd need to allocate to, to do that project?
It's 1.2 million.
About two.
Two and a half. Oh, two and a half.
Two and a half million.
Okay.
And there's the Drummond Project.
And we've talked about doing that in two phases also, and you had the one phase on your presentation earlier. Now, I, I have a question.
Sure.
This is probably a little late to be asking this question, but, uh, the, the sync project you had.
You want me to go back to special projects?
No, it was the sync project, the previous slide, I think, uh, where we're synchronizing the signals from Ridgecrest Boulevard South. We've awarded that contract. I, I kept thinking about that. How do you sync signals when you've got left turn lanes and, and pedestrian crossings and all that? Doesn't that, do they have some kind of formula to use to do that?
That's why we're paying a consultant.
But I mean, if I'm going down at 35 miles an hour, I should be able to catch them all green, but if Joe Blow is wanting to cross Upjohn and he pushes the button, that's going to change the signal, right?
Well, usually, it, it depends how they set it up, but if they synchronize it based on timing, not necessarily so, the pedestrian would just be waiting for the time. But if they set it up on demand response, because intersections can't be set up on demand, then yes, that would influence and disrupt the synchronization.
Okay.
Okay, so that's where we are on Public Works as we talk today, remembering that, uh, these are allocations as of now, status now.
I got, I got one other question.
Sure.
Does, does this came up in our Infrastructure Committee, and Dennis just gave me this. In the, in the presentation for the bonds, there were three specific projects mentioned in the request for the bonds. And I think two, two of them have been done, West Ridgecrest Boulevard was done, and College Heights has been done. But the third one was, um, was Norma Street. Says, "Norma Street, design reconstruction curves, gutters, and sidewalk where necessary, including the design and reconstruction of the Bowman Channel culverts under Norma Street." Norma Street from Bowman South to China Lake Boulevard is one of the worst streets in town, and, uh, it was a specific project, but it's not on our list anywhere.
Uh, I, I would defer to the Streets Department.
Well, the, uh, my, my only comment on that is, probably not my only comment, but what happened was, is, um, I think, uh, Mr. Parsons had indicated that there has been changes. I mean, it's evolved as far as what the lists were. And, uh, what happened is, uh, when the bonds were about to be allocated, the, uh, member, uh, city council members that were then on the Infrastructure Committee, uh, it was about the same time that we, that the, uh, consultant had done the PMS study. And so, as an afterthought to the PMS study, a particular member of the Infrastructure Committee that was also a city councilman said, "Well, I'll tell you what, we're about to allocate some bonds that are, are tax allocation bonds, and could, yeah, based on the PM, the Pavement Management System study you just performed, even though that's for, uh, street maintenance, could you, from that same data, find out what the worst streets are and, uh, develop a list, a five-year list of streets that if we could throw," and he gave, gave, uh, our consultant a number, I think it was either 15 or 16 million dollars, "if we could spend that much money, uh, could you give us a list of what streets we should do?" And so, it's kind of like anything that had been discussed before went away, and the focus then became on what originally was a five-year list, but because of the amounts of money involved, it ended up being a three-year list. And I think, uh, the, the entire focus after the development by the consultant of that major pro, I mean, a, a major maintenance or, uh, capital improvement type, uh, project list was developed, uh, the, everything else sort of left the radar.
Now, I think it was early January when we had a heavy rain, that Bowman Channel flooded over Norma Street. And, uh, pretty bad, actually. Also flooded up by the Northmore also, but, uh, if you drive down Norma from Upjohn South to China Lake Boulevard, it's, I mean, it's really a bad road. So for some reason, that's not on the, uh, management plan. I guess my question is, do we have any money unallocated? I don't know how much it would cost to redo that road, or how much it would cost to do the culvert, like it said in the, we told the bondholders we were going to do that, and we're not doing it.
In, in terms of TAB money, you would be, according to the Streets allocation, you'd have to take from one of your projected projects, which would be either Norma or Downs, Drummond or Downs, I'm sorry, to get, to fund Norma, unless you get another funding source. In other words, in terms of TAB money, there isn't any other money allocated to Streets at this point, other than the special projects money from the Walmart project, which is allocated right now, or directed, being directed towards Downs. And 1.6 million for Ridgecrest Boulevard.
The last, the TAB allocation project, Street Project. The last, the TAB allocation project, street project savings?
There's $428,000. My understanding is.
$469,000.
My understanding from Lauren was, I'll double check with that, that was also being allocated for those two streets, for the two of the combination, Drummond and Downs.
Well, and then there's the potential of the city being successful against the Department of Finance in that AMG loan, too.
Well, yeah, and I will also talk to you in the next two slides, two slides down. You still have a contingent liability issue of about 2.6 million to be paid out of tabs you don't have allocated for right now. So what I'm trying, what I end up telling you is you have no TAB money available to do anything with.
We have no TAB.
Unless you start taking it from someplace else. You have to, it's no, you know, not allocated, you can just sort of there, it's gonna have to take it from the ED, Streets, Parks, you know, some other space to give it to those. That's where we're gonna be. But let me, unless you have more, I'll try to get through this for you. The next one is probably the one that probably most people would be most interested, and I'm sure you would be, is the economic development, is, I'm sorry, currently uncommitted TAB funds. By the way, I apologize for any misspellings in the process. I noticed one in the next slide. The economic development has essentially $255,000 of uncommitted money that it was allocated. However, obviously, one of the programs, I'll give you a couple of examples. One of the programs we were looking at was the Small Business Development and Small Business Grant and/or Expansion Opportunities for Small Business. At the time, at more than we even have, it was a 250. And so that money is, although not yet committed any contract, we have actually plans for using that money. And so unless we change how we plan on using it, it's technically allocated to certain other purposes. The Parks and Recs Department, 2.4 million, I described that to you earlier. That's primarily the, a lot of that is associated with the Kerr McGee Project, which is in planning and design and trying to get permits to do. $2.8 million is Public Works, which is obviously going to be allocated. It's just not spent, it'll be spent this year for Streets and other things that are in Works. So although there's no contract issue, there may be designs done, there may be other pre-work that's been done, and they just haven't either signed the contract or issued the contract or gone out to bid for the project, but it's allocated. Special Projects, again, is the Walmart Project. That's money that is now targeted by the Department for Downs and Drummond, but it's certainly, you know, if you chose not to do Downs or not to do Drummond or try and find another funding source, you could theoretically re-legalize that money some other way. So we end up with about $7,008,000 out of that project that's allocated. But I would mention that the funds are allocated or being developed for various stages of developments within those departments. So, and before we get into any questions I have, I want to bring you the last slide, which is the bad news, too. And that is, let me explain, because some of this, this I thought was important to talk about. We've had some questions about the wastewater loan and the city owing the money and so on. The successor agency is currently in default to the city for non-payment of the former RDA loan to a city in the amount, to the city in the amount of $2,567,230. What happened was the RDA was closed, it made a loan to the city, it actually made a couple of payments. The RDA was dissolved, the DOF decided that it wasn't a legitimate loan between the RDA and the city in their view. Our attorney and legal staff believe that it is, and so does the departments. And so we are in the middle of suing the state Department of Finance for non-payment of that loan to the city. So the RDA is in default to the city, and we're in the process of trying to sue the state on the basis of the state's action. And so we're suing the state to get that money back to pay the city. And consequently, however, the city borrowed the money that it gave to the RDA for the wastewater fund. So basically, now, the wastewater fund is, the city's in default, if you want to look at it that way, it's not technically in default, but it hasn't made payment, a full payment to the wastewater fund. So either the city will have to look at paying this 2.567 million dollar amount in payments over several years, obviously, the general fund couldn't do it, through the general fund, or we have to try to use currently unallocated TAB funds, which we don't have at the moment, currently unallocated, to pay the wastewater fund if the successor agency sees lawsuit is unsuccessful. Therefore, we have sort of a potential liability sitting within the TAB monies, if you want to look at it that way, and that's all how you look at it, $2.5 million approximately, which we would use TAB money to pay the city, who would then pay the wastewater fund. So even if you were to find money, it would be certainly my recommendation, staff recommendation, to not spend that money on another project or another use until we determine how you want to deal with the liability that we're talking about here. If the council chooses, says, "Well, we're just gonna make payments and set up a loan structure and payment structure to pay that loan over the next 10 years to the wastewater fund out of the general fund," then we don't, then we, obviously, TAB monies can be used any way it wants to be used. If you want to hold back, or try to hold back at least, any funds that become available with TAB monies, or reallocate TAB monies to pay that $2.5 million, then we have to, then we would have to look at any of those funds that don't get utilized the way they're allocated now to be put into the reserve. So what I'm trying to tell you is you're $2.5 million in the hole on TAB monies before you start, if you're gonna use those TAB monies to pay that wastewater loan. And with that good news, that's the end of my part, so I'll be glad to answer questions.
I have a question. On the 7.8 million that.
Yes.
It's currently uncommitted, if we take the 2.567, it's 5.269026, that we have there.
Mm-hmm.
Of that, we haven't even accounted for it like the $800,000 from EH Group, because even though it's committed, it has not been spent.
That's correct. It's not spent, but we have a contract to spend that if they perform. So unless you want to default on the contract.
If they don't perform based on the.
If they don't, at some point in the future, that money could become available. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just want to look at those, because there are those monies that are allocated, but not committed, that are part of, that are not part of this unallocated monies.
Yeah, I think that I tried to make it easier by not talking about encumbered and expended, because that makes, it's confusing when you do that.
It is.
And what I, and I tried to add those together, merge those together, to talk about committed. And what I'm saying in committed is that either we have a contract in place that, you know, we're supposed to perform on, and if we default on it, there's a potential liability, or we've spent the money. An example of EH Group is an example. We have a contract that sits there that says that we owe him the 420. If he does not perform, then the 420 would become available when we are in a position to do that. We can't do that tonight, because we don't know whether he perform or not.
I understand.
So perhaps at some point in the future, we'll have more money. But like I said before, if the 420 becomes available, the question would be, do you want to, that's my big question tonight, is do you want to hold back, start holding back money for the $2.6 million potential liability to the wastewater fund if we don't win the suit? Now, we may also win, here's another thing that could happen, there are a lot of ifs here, I'm sorry.
No.
If we win the suit against, on the AMG, the 2 point some million dollars.
Three million.
Three million. We'll have, we have $6 million in litigation pending with the state. If we win one, we'll have enough money to pay the debt, the loan off, the, this contingent liability, or use it someplace else, but we'll gain 3 million dollars. If we win both, we'll have 6 million dollars. But until we win one or lose one, it's just a pending thing. So it's not something you can start manipulating the money with until we win or lose those cases.
And the state has not been cooperating on that.
I'd refer to our legal counsel on that, they're involved in those litigation, so.
They've been stalling it, too.
That's correct.
I think one of the things, I don't think anybody wants to commit here and say we're going to default on any of our commitments to these people or to anybody, but when it comes down to the reality of it, we need to look at, and I think we do need, I don't know if you want a decision here tonight, because it's not on the agenda, but I'd like to see us make a commitment in concept of what we're gonna do with how we deal with the wastewater loan, because.
That's a critical, yeah.
It needs to be taken care of and decided where we're going with this.
Right, and really, to me, the issue is, do you want to structure it as though it's gonna be a loan paid off through general fund over years, or are you gonna try to structure it to pay it off based on TAB funds in some way or form, or another source of funds? And so, because that way, that way you can, it allows us to start looking at how to manipulate this, any sort of resources we have for TAB money that happens to come available, or if we win a litigation, we know what we're gonna do and so on. But I would caution you about trying to figure out how to spend money out of TAB money right now, because we don't, you know, although the EH Group could default, they couldn't.
It's uncommitted, but it's allocated. It's all allocated.
It's all allocated, it's all, you know, it's all there, and the staff is basically spending money. Another small thing, well, not small, but another factor in this thing, unfortunately, is, and I mentioned this to many, several of you, is the issue about the IRS, and I had the, you've gotten emails and other conversations from our lawyers, bond lawyer, about this issue about gray money or soft money issue. We, the, if you're conservative, you work on the basis of the $24,900,000, we have about 5%, that is considered to be soft cost money or gray money. That's only about $1.2 million that you could have in that category before you go in, before you're vulnerable to IRS coming in and auditing you and finding out that, and the penalty is huge, it's just, it would be terrible, is that those bonds would become taxable. If the, if IRS declared the bonds were taxable because you didn't meet this requirement or exceeded this requirement, then the impact would be tremendous to the city. I mean, literally, all the taxpayers would be eligible for tax, for non-taxable, I'm sorry, for taxable bond rates, which means the financing costs would be like double. So you would owe twice the insurance, the interest rate on those, they'd become taxable bonds. The other negative to that is the IRS would then turn around and say, "Oh, by the way, since they were taxable bonds and you didn't pay, the bondholders didn't pay the taxes on those, taxes are due and penalties are due, and guess who gets to pay those?" They would claim the city has the opportunity to pay those. So that would be another huge hit on us, on our funds. And the third one would be, the actually, there's another penalties and fees the IRS causes for being, going through a bond issuance process that becomes taxable. So we don't want to be there. So we have to be very careful that we monitor some of the, and I've always been jumping up and down about soft costs. We're at about, if you, roughly, it's about one and a quarter million dollars, it's really $1,245,000 at 24,900,000. That's essentially the target for the gray money or soft cost money, depending on how you define it. And my rough estimates, and just, and believe me, it's rough, because sometimes they're gonna change, these categories are gonna change depending. For example, if, if, a good one is EH Group, and I'm not picking on, I think, by the way, I think they're a very good organization, they're doing their job, but, so this is not in any way, I don't want to say that EH Group isn't performing, because it is to date. But if, for example, they defaulted, or they didn't do it, or pick another company, didn't spend the money appropriately, one of the three companies, didn't spend the money on capital expenditures, their number now flips into the soft cost area. So that $420,000, unless we spend it some other way on a project capital expenditure, would then become a soft cost. We're at $700,000 approximately right now to the $1.2 million in soft costs, approximately, based on my calculation. And again, I don't, I would tell you that's plus or minus 10, 15%, because each project's changing. If, for example, you decided not to fund the Parks Department's project, the, you know, that he spent money on engineering and costs and soft costs and all that, all those costs would then roll into the soft cost category, because you didn't do the capital expenditure that went with it. In other words, you didn't complete the project. So we have to be a little careful that we try to save as much of that area as we can in case projects don't happen. Or even a Streets project that if they do, like if you did the design on the Downs Project and we spent money in the poles, and we spent money, and then you decided you couldn't do the Downs Project, all of those expenditures would become soft costs, because you didn't do the Downs capital expenditure. The way we get around that is we're saying, even though these soft costs, these engineering design, what we typically might call a soft cost, these design projects are necessary to complete the capital expenditure, so we could add them in to the total project costs, and it's a capital expenditure, so it applies to that. So just, that's another factor I just want to bring up to you, because it's a really important one, because if we get exceeded and we were to get audited and we got in trouble, it literally is a bankrupting kind of scenario. It's a huge liability to the general fund. So not something that we want to do. Staff doesn't want to see happen, at least, so that's.
Well, taking TAB money to pay back the loan to the sewer plant, is that soft cost?
Well, the loan, yeah, here's the key to that. We would argue that that money is being paid, the RDA is paying that to the, there's a project that was done, the solar plant.
There was a project, so it's.
So the solar plant, so that's why I'm saying, that's actually a legitimate expenditure. So we can tie that to the solar plant, so we can show a capital expenditure. So I don't think that would be a problem.
Okay, is there any other council comments?
Very good presentation, really good information. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Again, it's an ongoing project, so it's as good as I talked tonight. Tomorrow, things will change a little.
We appreciate it. Is there any public comment on this? Okay, I'm gonna go then, go to public comment. Public comment, persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on any item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. A public comment in section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Sir?
Just vote for Tom, Mr. Cruz, Ted Cruz, because he's gonna abolish the IRS. Yeah, it won't happen overnight, but that's why I'm voting for him. Anyway, February 1st, April 1st, appropriate day, April Fool's Day, our telephone service provider, so to speak, switched over to Frontier. I don't know if anybody has had any problems or not, mine seemed, my internet seemed to be having a little problem here and there. But I encountered them the day before, on March 31st, because I had some questions that I wanted to ask. And I will tell you right now, it was not a very pleasant experience. It was not that they had somebody who couldn't speak English, it was their damn phone connection was hard to hear. I mean, I don't know what they were on, but it was terrible. I had to ask the person to repeat what they were saying several times. And it wasn't my phone, because I made a phone call after that on the same phone, so it was okay. I'm bringing this up because if anybody has any other experiences or problems with their service, file a complaint with the California Public Utilities Commission and get it resolved, because I don't know whether we're jumping out of the frying pan into the fire, or we're actually gonna solve some problems. One thing I forgot to mention in Mr. Spears' presentation is that he mentioned that the Streets are bad all over the country, and I don't know how many, I think I mentioned this once before, but if you're familiar with Google Maps, you can go there and actually get a street view and progress along a street with the vehicle that was taking the pictures. And instead of looking at the surrounding scenery, focus and look at the pavement, and you'll see Streets that are just as bad or not, if not even worse than what we have here in Richcrest. So I guess that's basically everything I've got for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Rotora?
Stan Rotora, good evening. Back in October of last year, we authorized, or the city authorized, almost $800,000 for a new finance system. a new finance system. I was hoping that one of these nights, at one of the upcoming city council meetings, we could have a presentation from the staff, giving us an indication of the transition between the old system and the new system, including a schedule. And in another particular interest I have is what type of reports can be obtained from this thing. I'm assuming it's going to be, hopefully, a straightforward technique of being able to program something that'll give us real reports out, that give us real information, and if not real time, something close to real time. And so I would appreciate somebody authorizing the staff to give such a report in the upcoming near future. Any question?
Thank you. I would agree. I'd like to see where we are. I've heard a couple of dates, and it would be interesting, please, if you could do that for us.
We can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Merk?
I would like to thank the City of Ridgecrest, Mayor Breeden, and the county, and all the people that are putting forward to have the meeting held on April 15th on the GSA. I only wish that there's enough papers, copies, to go to the public at this meeting. And if there isn't, maybe there would be a provision that a copy machine would be available here at the city, since it would be after hours from 5:00 to 7:00. Thank you.
Thank you. I do know that was, that request was made at the last meeting, and we were assured that they would have sufficient copies. Without knowing whether it's going to be 25 or 200, it's kind of hard to guess. Okay, any other public comment? Okay, we are actually going to go on. Council announcements. Jim?
None.
I have none. Well, I do have, yes, I do. I wanted to mention that and about the GSA, but also on the 30th of April, here, we're going to welcome the Fin, the Finnish, is that the word, Finnish community to Ridgecrest. There's 18 families that are coming over time, and they are going to be meeting at the Kermiti at Freedom Park, eating pizza. So come on down and introduce yourself to the, all the new families that are coming in. That's what I have.
Are they moving in?
They're moving here for 18 months. Some of them are rotating in and out. Sir?
None.
Peggy, would you join me down here, please?
I don't have my shoes on.
I don't care.
Okay, I don't either.
At the last KernCOG meeting, I was given this to make a presentation. I left my glasses up there, I got to go get my glasses.
Oh, good, we don't have to read it then, right?
Ha ha. This is the Office of the Secretary of Defense, Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve recognizes Peggy Breeden and the City of Ridgecrest as a patriotic employer for contributing to national security and protecting liberty and freedom by supporting employee participation in America's National Guard and Reserve Force. And it's signed by the National Chair and the Executive Director of Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve. And this was given to me by the KernCOG rep to present to the city from them, as they put us in for this. And I'd like to present it to you.
Well, thank you. On behalf of all the city and the employees and the employers, I'd like to say thank you, because the credit goes to our city and our community. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right, sir. Okay, after council announcements, we come to the consent calendar. All items in the consent calendar are considered to be routine by city staff and will be approved in one motion if no member of the council or the public wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or questions is desired by anyone, that item may be removed from the consent calendar and will be considered separately and public comments before any action is taken. Item number four, adopt a resolution, the City of Ridgecrest, the City Council, the City of Ridgecrest authorizing the application for federal funding under the Federal Transit Act, Section 5311. I'm not going to read all the numbers. You, all right, I will. Section 5311, 49, USC, Section 5311, with the California Department of Transportation. Item number five, adopt a resolution to approve a professional services agreement with the engineering firm of Quadcoff in the amount of $32,414 to prepare applications for the congestion mitigation air quality and active transportation program and regional surface transportation program for the City of Ridgecrest and authorize the city manager Dennis Spear to execute the agreement. Item number six, adopt a resolution to approve a professional services agreement with the engineering firm of David Evans and Associates in the amount of $15,000 to prepare an application for the highway safety improvement program for the City of Ridgecrest and authorize city manager Dennis Spear to execute the agreement. Number seven, adopt a resolution to approve a professional services agreement with David Evans and Associates for traffic engineering services, services in the amount of $11,900 and authorize the city manager Dennis Spear to execute the professional services agreement. Number eight, adopt a resolution of the City of Ridgecrest, the City Council, the City of Ridgecrest approving contract changes order number one in the amount of $13,624.91 with the contractor CS Legacy Construction Incorporated for the corporation yard site improvements and authorizing city manager Dennis Spear to sign change order number one. Number nine, adopt a resolution approving contract change order number two in the amount of $34,973.28 with the contractor CSS Legacy Construction Incorporated for the corporation yard site improvements and authorize the city manager Dennis Spear to sign change order number two. Number 10, adopt a resolution, the City of Council, City, Ridgecrest City Council approving a community development activity agreement with the County of Kern for the community development block grant funding for the senior center improvements, design only, and accepting the terms of the receipt of the advanced, of the advanced 2016, 2017 CDBG funds with the original CDG funds and the authors, and authorizing city manager Dennis Spear to sign the agreement. Number 11, adopt a resolution, the City Council approving adjustments to the Park and Recreation Department Youth Program and execute and facility rental fees. Number 12, approve a resolution authorizing a contract with York Risk Service Group Incorporated for workers' compensation, third-party administration, in the amount of $42,500 and authorizing the city manager to sign the contract. And number 13, approve draft minutes of the Ridgecrest City Council Successor Redevelopment Agency Financing Authority Housing Authority, meeting dated March 16, 2016. Is there anyone who would like an item pulled from the calendar and council?
Number nine.
Like, 10 and 11, please.
Nine, 10, and 11. Anybody from public wishing any items to be pulled? Six and seven. So I think, as I understand it, we're approving motions, I mean, item number four, five, eight, 12, and 13.
So moved. Second.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Councilmember Mauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanders?
Aye.
We have four ayes, one absent, motion carries. Okay, let's take item number six first. Mr. Spear? And Dave, you had some, you asked for it to be pulled.
Yeah, my question on these two is that there's, this is a contractor that I haven't heard of before. Have we done business with him before, and where?
Yes, we have, but the firm is actually, David Evans bought the, what was the firm before?
Hall & Foreman.
Hall & Foreman. The contracts that have been before the council before were Hall & Foreman, but David Evans bought out Hall & Foreman. And so now, for traffic engineering, at least for this particular contract, we're dealing with this David Evans.
Okay, so their qualifications and everything are still the same? I mean.
Supposedly even exceed the level of the firm they bought.
Okay, that's, that's the only thing that caught my attention. Thank you.
Okay.
I was curious, I didn't pull these, but I was curious. Since we have two engineers on staff now, are some of these small contracts, can we do them in-house, or?
Well, this particular type of project is kind of like a question you brought up earlier about the synchronization. They have to have support documents that you have to have, especially in traffic engineering, to be able to complete the support work to the company's application.
Okay.
Do we want to approve these as we do them, or do we want to?
Let's go ahead and just do it, let's go ahead and do it just one at a time. So a motion to adopt, item number six.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Councilmember Mauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanders?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent, motion carries. Okay, item number seven, you asked for that one to be pulled?
Well, he covered them both together, so.
You want, that was your same question on both of them?
I move approval of seven.
Second.
Second. I'm in my mind, buddy.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Councilmember Mauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanders?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent, motion carries. Okay, item number nine.
Yes, Mayor Breeden and members of the council and members of the public. The reason I pulled this is because there's a one cent discrepancy between the change order and the agenda item. And when I was reviewing the agenda item, I took out a calculator just to confirm the amounts, and I found out that there was, it actually totals what's identified there on the agenda item in the staff report, $34,973.26 if you total the individual items. So I thought perhaps staff made a mistake in transferring the information from the change order. So I went through the change order, and I found out that the change order is wrong, the total is wrong. The individual items are what they are, and if you total them up, they're one cent short of what they, what the individual items would, what the summation would be. So I made sure that the, the item was correct in the, on the staff report. Then I called our city attorney and told him the situation, and he said, well, you have two choices. You either ask the consultant, which is overseeing our project management of this project, to contact the contractor, revise the change order to reflect the one cent discrepancy, or you will have to pull it and explain it to council. And what, because, and so we've contacted the, the, our project manager. He's looked at it, and he says, I'm not sure how you, in a five or six item list, how you have a rounding error. But he says this is a computer rounding error, and in fact, he's not going to give us a revised change order. So I'm pulling it to let you know that I feel that if their individual items add up to one cent more than what he has for total, we should pay them the one cent more than they show as a total on their change order. And I'll, I guess, cross through their total on their change order before I sign it.
That's how you get a $100 response to a one cent problem.
Yeah, yeah. I was, I was about to say, I think we've already spent more than one cent of everybody's time to figure that out.
So we are pulling this item? Or can we approve it with?
Prove it as.
With a correction?
I have a comment about it. It just, I was going to pull it, not because of a one cent error, but it just struck me that some of the things on here, they weren't on the original plans. I mean, we had to know that we would need the, the emergency fuel tank switch and conduit. I just, I can't believe that this many items weren't on the original contract and we had to make change orders for them. We're just short of all the plans?
These were late items that were added in review of the plans. These were some items that were requested through IT.
Can you get on mic? Put it in the public in here. So ID, IT requested the pedal, the power pedestal transfer switch?
There were some conduct runs that were necessary to.
Can you get on the mic?
Lauren, can you come up here, so in case the public is able to hear it too?
And usually, maybe I'm, maybe I'm forgetting this, but it seemed, number, number two E, don't they usually figure the cost, including the foreman supervision? That's a separate item?
Let me get caught up to you here. We're looking at the change order for number nine.
Number nine.
And two E. Okay, I'm caught up with you now. I'm sorry, may I have your question again?
I would think that the different things would include supervision, it just, I just, I don't remember ever seeing a separate item for supervision on these items before.
Well, it's, it's, they're breaking it down for you, is what it amounts to. It, they're, it's an itemized change order for supervision. Sometimes the supervision will be included within that particular item of work, but in this case, they broke out hours, and therefore, it was identified as a individual item. So it's just breaking out the actual cost for.
So we paid $5,000 to supervise a $20,000 change order?
Yeah, that is correct. And these are all confirmed in the field by hourly and daily reports.
Okay, it just, some of them just seem like they should have been on the original, but, okay.
Okay, is there any questions or other items, what we're going to do with this? We're approving it with a one cent change?
Yeah, I'll motion approval with the, as amended.
Second.
So what, first of all, what is the new total? It's just one cent less than that?
It's one cent more.
One cent more?
It's 26, it's 25.
Okay.
It reads correctly on the staff report and on the resolution.
Oh, this is correct, okay.
The resolution, the staff report are correct, but the change order's wrong.
Gotcha.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Councilmember Mauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanders?
Aye.
We have four ayes, one absent, motion carries. Okay, item number 10, who asked for that to be pulled?
I did.
Okay, Jim?
Let me get through my notes, because I can't even remember what I was going to ask. Hold on just a second here. Okay, so, that's not the right one. So, okay, so we're, you're asking us to approve modification of the fees for what, what, I'm not sure I'm on the right item real quick. Okay, basically, what is this while I find out?
We're on item 10, I believe.
What's that?
Item 10, correct.
Yeah. My computer's malfunctioning here.
Yeah, well, 11 is the fees.
10 is the CDBG. Okay, all in favor?
Okay, yes. 10 is the CDBG, okay. I apologize, my memory is horrible, so I have to stick to the notes.
The $26,000, and then? The 26,000, and then an additional 62.
Yes, thank you. So, so this one, I was, I was just a little confused, because it said in the, in the top, in the title, it was design only, but then in the paragraph, we're speaking to contracts and construction. What exactly is, is going to be done with these funds? And I'm also confused as to what the actual cost of the funds are, or cost of the project is.
So the original, you have to excuse me, I'm getting over this cold, but originally, we had, the council approved, I think it was even before this council was seated, approved this contract with the county for the CDGB funds for the senior center in the amount shown of $26,000. Well, what happened was, when, by the time we went out to bid for this, and Lauren can speak to this as well, because he helped me with this, the $26,000 wasn't enough for any, any kind of consultant or contractor to take the project on. We put it out for bid, and we got zero responses. And Lauren went even further to contact, you know, additional contractors, and no one's willing to touch it. It's a huge amount of paperwork when you do these kinds of projects. So what the council previously decided was that we'd go after these additional 2016 and 17 funds in the amount of $62,000 to add to that, to try to go out to bid again to, to see if we could get the project rolling.
And this is for the building improvements?
Yes, the building improvements, not the parking lots, a separate issue.
That's, yeah.
So now, with these added funds, we're going to go out again, and hopefully, we'll get someone to respond to our, our, our bid output.
So the part of the RFQ then is, I mean, do they know how much money we have allocated when we request for the bids, or is that, is that why they're not quoting, you think, or?
Wasn't one of the bigger reasons, I'm just refreshing my memory, but wasn't one of the bigger reasons because of what they have to actually do in terms of the paperwork associated with CDVG type of...
Right. When you take those type, this type of funds, it basically takes, takes extra manpower to do the amount of paperwork that it takes to do the project. And if it's not, if the project isn't at a certain level, they won't even look at it.
Because of the scope of the project isn't big enough to make it worth it?
Because of the scope of the project and the paperwork involved that they have to file with the government.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
That was a huge part of the problem.
Okay, so we're just, we're just pulling our advanced resources for next year?
Correct.
And, and making the project bigger to take care of more, more issues?
Correct.
Okay.
Absolutely right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Man, you guys are quick.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
I was going to say something this time.
I'm sorry, did you want to say?
No, no, no.
No.
I was going to make a motion this time as well.
Oh, okay.
Councilmember Mauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanders?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent. Motion carries.
Okay, number 11. You asked for that one too, Jim?
I think I did, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to call for this one also.
Yeah.
This was the fees, right?
We're asking to approve the proposed modifications, but we didn't get any proposed modifications.
Okay.
Can you come down?
We all were going to ask that same thing.
There's some extra copies up here for the public if they want to see. It's basically, I didn't, it wasn't included, because it's basically, it's a 10% increase in the, in the fees. So the numbers you see before you are the, the current fees, obviously, there's a, a line item there for that, and then the proposed changes, and if you do the math, it's basically 10%.
Across the board, everywhere?
On, on these specific items, yes.
When was the last time we raised fees?
I, well, I've been there almost three years, and it has been at least that long, so I, I can't answer that.
Thank you, it's been, it's been over three years.
It's been too long, you know, so this is, we need to slowly increase them because of the cost of, of equipment and, you know, maintenance, utilities, increase in, in minimum wages. So basically, this is a smaller, we really need to go higher than this, but we're going to slowly do it over time instead of hitting the public all at once, and we'll gradually do it, but...
I noticed we, we charge a, a fee to use the tennis courts?
If, if you want to rent them and have it as your...
For a tournament or something?
For a tournament, if you want to solely have use of it, yes.
Okay, but if you just go out there to play, there's no charge?
Right, no, no charge. Just like our basketball court, you can, we have an open gym where people can play, but if you want to rent the gym, it costs you money.
Okay. Jason, why did we go down on the racquetball court?
We went down, that's a good question. We went down on the racquetball courts because the, I, I did a study in different areas of cities and private places that have racquetball courts, and our, our rate was, was higher than all of them. So that can contribute to the, you know, hopefully, that'll increase the use of them a little bit. But that's the reason.
I guess that was my next question in reference to that. Do we, you get a lot of people that participate in that? Event, that, that activity, racquetball, or do you do tournaments?
It's sporadic. We use it for other things other than racquetball too, the, the courts other than racquetball. We use it for racquetball. We use it for some zumba classes and, and aerobics classes, and we use it for badminton and things like that. So we, we, it's, we use it for multiple uses.
Any other questions?
No, this answered mine.
Okay, no public, so, oh, I guess we do have one.
Tom Wicknick. Would you consider possibly adding on the one, the city council chambers per hour rate of city council chamber rate with TV services from your TV? The reason for that is, coming up, if we continue like the GSA meetings here, and you decide to put them out over TV, that if you're now doing an in-kind donation towards the GSA of facility with other services, you could include that amount as far as the in-kind cost expenditures that you're putting into the GSA. So if you had the capability to quantify in a dollar value, TV services, it might be beneficial to the city to do that, as well as if anybody wanted to use the facility here, like the school district, et cetera, with TV services, you would have a cost factor applied to that.
I, I think we do currently, the school district currently uses it. Rick, do you know if they currently, we currently charge for that? We, we do not. We, I, the reason why I'm asking, Rick, is because my department doesn't book, we maintain the facility here, but we don't currently book this facility. That goes through the clerk's office. But, I mean, we could do whatever you guys wish. We could absolutely add a fee if that's what you'd like to do, and we could, we could manage that.
I think it'd be good for the future.
That's, that's up to the council.
I think it would be appropriate to look at if we can get an estimate of what we would pay someone to use to operate the camera and do that kind of information, and we can always, I don't think we can add it on now, but I think it'd be appropriate to look at that.
Yeah, I would caution the city council that if we're leasing out this space for meetings, we will not be able to control the content of the meetings. So, in other words, we, we will be creating a public forum, and then we'll have to make it available to groups that can pay the fees, regardless of whatever the content of the speech is. In the past, that's been something that has discouraged that type of use, but interesting.
So were I to come in and want to do something that wasn't illegal, but may have not be moral?
Ethical or moral?
Can I say that? Ethical or moral?
Like if the Ku Klux Klan wanted to rent it?
Yeah, that's what I was going to use that word, but I didn't know.
That's, that's an example, right. We wouldn't be able to say no on the basis that we didn't like what they were doing, or the speech that they were, I mean, obviously, if they're doing something illegal, we could stop that, but if they were simply speaking their, you know, whatever their disgusting policies were, we couldn't do anything to stop that.
So would we not charge for it then, or we just say it's only open to governmental entities? Or how do you do that?
Right, you keep it, you keep it as a forum that's only used for city purposes.
Currently, we do rent it out though, don't we?
Well, you'd be excluding people that are currently using it, I believe, if you did that.
Even some of the, you know, the charity, charitable clubs and things like that, yeah.
Lions Club speech and even the school district is that...
The school districts, is what I was going to say.
Yeah.
I have a feeling that most of the current uses, we could probably describe broadly as a city use, but we would, we can develop a written policy for that.
We could have the same problem with the Kerr McGee Center though, right? I mean, we rent the Kerr McGee Center out, so...
Correct.
It's a public building. I, I would imagine that the Kerr McGee Center, and Mr. Lemieux, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think maybe we have a little bit more control of what goes on there, because there's children in the building. I mean, you couldn't, I mean, does, does that matter?
Well, we're talking about speech. We're not talking about conduct. We, we are allowed to put in place appropriate, what's called appropriate time, place, and manner restrictions, as opposed to content-based restrictions. The presence of children could be a factor, I guess, for some form of time, place, or manner restriction. I guess we haven't faced this issue, so we haven't really, but maybe it's a good time to talk about it.
Yeah, because I can think of several events that might happen that are not appropriate to have children around that.
But, but usually...
We wouldn't want to allow them there.
Evening events don't usually have children in them, right?
Hmm, that's not totally true. I've seen...
We have basketball leagues in there up until nine, 10 o'clock at night sometimes, and, yeah, so that's not necessarily true.
I've been to a lot of dinners and banquets and stuff that were basically for adults, so...
Yeah, but right next to them and the rest of the surrounding building could have children's events going on as close as those meeting rooms right next to, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, they're going to be in the hallways.
Can we make something as generic as saying that we would allow staff, if they have concerns, to come back to, I don't know who, to say, this isn't appropriate? I mean, how do, I don't know how to make it generic enough so we can accomplish it, and yet still not infringe on anybody's right.
Yeah, we would have to take some effort into crafting something. I mean, again, you can, you can, you know, you can regulate the time, place, and manner of the speech. You can decide that it will only be used during certain hours for certain purposes, that kind of thing. That may have the effect of, of getting the desired effect anyway if you craft it correctly, but what you can't do is say, you know, we will not, we will not lease these premises to, you know, people who are expressing views that we find abhorrent, or something like that. So, you know, that's, that's the issue.
Can, can we delete this part of the, the city council chambers per hour out and, and approve the rest until we come up with? Because does that mean then it applies to the Kerr McGee Center and all that too?
I'm not, I'm not sure what that notation was intended to represent, Jason.
Well, Tom, Tom was saying that we should put this in. It's already in, Tom.
Yeah, we already have a fee for it. It's just...
The TV services.
Oh, the TV services.
Is that what's what he wanted?
And I think going back to that original point was, it's, it's one thing to allow any group or organization to, to rent out the hall. It's another for us to facilitate broadcasting it if we don't, if we don't agree with the content or things like that.
Yeah, well, to, I think, to address what Mr. Wicknick is asking, we can handle that kind of like we handle events at the Kerr McGee Center. If it's, they're just renting the facility, these fees are applied to them renting the facility. If they need additional services from our technical staff, they have to, they have to go through them, and they'll, they'll charge the appropriate fees.
Oh, okay.
So we can handle it that way. That's the way we handle it now.
Oh, okay.
So if I wanted to have a small public forum here personally, that'd be one fee, but if I wanted to have it televised, I'd have to pay an additional fee?
You'd have to pay for the technical staff, yeah.
So, so they're charging now, okay?
So, any other comments? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Oh dang it, second.
Got to be faster out here.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Councilmember Mauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanders?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent. Motion carries.
Okay, where do we go with number 14? Did Mrs. Acton leave us a nomination, or what are we doing with this, Dennis? Number 14, because I know we had an opening, and we have a need to fill that opening.
I'm looking through my papers to see if she left me anything here. She did, and what did she say? This is the appointment of Personnel Commission?
Yes.
Ah, yes. She has some bullets for me to read. It said Councilman, former Councilman Jerry Taylor, well, at the time, Councilman Jerry Taylor, appointed by Lori Acton, has moved out of the area. Councilmember Acton was to nominate an appointment. Appointment expires December 2016 after the November 16 election. New appointments to be made January 2017 with next council. She does not, all I know is, well, from these bullets, Councilmember Acton was to nominate a new appointment. I haven't seen any email on that, so...
Let's not deal with this item then tonight and ask for it to be on the agenda. Would someone contact Councilwoman Acton and see where we are? Okay, then. Is that okay if I just do that, or do I need approval of the council to do that?
Go for it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, number 16. Nominate an appointment to the Measure L Citizens Advisory Committee, and the last deployment was yours, and he has resigned, so it is yours, Councilman Thomas.
My nomination for the Measure L Advisory Committee will be the one and only Mr. Jerry Potique, who is here tonight, that works on the base as a facility coordinator slash civil engineer, technician, surveyor. I'll just read one of the quick things I really love about what he put on his application. Why are you interested in this position? To help the city improve its network of roads using its Measure L funding to strive for the most bang for the buck on the road projects. And Mr. Potique, he is here, and would you be kind enough, Mr. Potique, to join us over here to pull in the case the council may have the question for?
I'd like to say I've seen this gentleman at the numerous, at least the past two, possibly three Measure L meetings, and, and that says something to me that he was cared enough to be there and listen, and I haven't heard you say anything. Perhaps I missed it, but I appreciate you being there. Questions for our nominee, his nominee?
I don't have any questions.
Oh, wow, that's simple.
Do you have anything you'd like to say, sir?
Thank you for the honor, for the ability to do this, and thank you, Councilman Thomas, for nominating me.
You're welcome, sir.
Do we need a second on there? Just phone over.
We have to vote on it, so we'll need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Councilmember Mauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanders?
Aye.
We have four ayes, one absent. Motion carries.
Welcome to the committee, and thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rika, can I pass you his application?
Okay, um, okay, the next item is a code of, discussion of a code of ethics and conduct for elected and appointed officials. Mr. Spear?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this item is a request for the council to discuss a proposed code of ethics and conduct for elected officials and appointed officials. The purpose is to promote public confidence in local government by requiring public officials to meet high ethical and behavioral standards. At the March 16th meeting of the city council, council indicated the interest to consider a code of ethics and conduct for public officials. The proposed code should include a section on ethical standards and a section on appropriate conduct, which describes the manner in which council members treat one another and others whom they come in contact while, while representing the city. Examples of codes of ethics or of conduct are attached, and the examples are from the cities of Belmont, Pismo Beach, Riverside, Santa Rosa, and Torrance. The Pismo Beach code is concise, and the Belmont code is comprehensive, but all of the codes focus on integrity and accountability. And at this time, the, the codes from the five different cities are attached, and it's, I guess it's a point in time that the council can discuss these codes, or codes in general. I guess it's a point in time that the council can discuss these codes or codes in general.
I, I read all of them, some of them determined when you could put a pair of shoes on and when you could take them off, but others were, the Torrance one was a godmotherhood and apple pie one, I did have a couple of questions about under responsibility. I will never excuse or nor inappropriate activities. Well, I don't know how you determine what an inappropriate activity is, and I don't think we can say that because it is not just how you act here, but how you act in the community, and quite frankly, I don't know how you determine that. And then the other one, under transparency. I will not maintain nor support any hidden agenda, and my decisions, actions will be based solely on the merits of the matter before me. I don't know how I determine whether Jim has a hidden agenda on an item. I don't know how that's done.
Have one on every item, I'm a politician.
And, but otherwise, the other ones were pretty, I mean, the fact that you couldn't even say anything about a council member or a staff.
That's, that's my problem.
Or anything, this was so ridiculous, like the one in Belmont.
The one I liked best was Pismo Beach, because it was only four pages long, the one.
Well, this one was only two.
But, but number three, conduct of members, members shall refrain from abusive conduct, personal charges or verbal attacks upon the character or motives of other members of the council, board, and commissions, public, and staff. That's kind of up to interpretation, you know, what I might consider abusive, Jim may not.
Yeah.
Or, or vice versa. I, I just think that's too open to interpretation, and, and if I disagree with Jim on an item, am I being abusive?
Yes.
Yeah, Belmont even said that you couldn't say anything critical. I mean, that was, I'm sorry, but that is our job, to voice our opinions and back them up with facts. I don't think it's my job to say I can't say anything critical. So, let me ask another question. We, this was put on here, as I, I understand, Dennis, because the League of Cities had, had questioned whether we had one or should we have one?
No, at a roundtable discussion at the League of Cities Conference for the city managers, at a, at a particular roundtable discussion, they were discussing on how they were going to revise their codes of ethics, and, and so when I came back from that conference, I asked our city clerk if she could pull our current codes, code of ethics that we have, and during her research, she says this council, not you particularly, but the city has never adopted a code of ethics, and so that's the reason I brought it up, that it had been discussed at the League of Cities, and other cities were in fact reviewing theirs to see if they wanted to revise or, you know, modify their codes in any way, and come to find out we actually do not have a code of ethics that's ever been adopted by a council. And that's what I was doing tonight, was providing about, uh, five different, sort of, a range, if you will, in terms of a spectrum of types of codes of ethics and conduct that are out there for your review.
Do we need a code of ethics? Are we, one, and two, are we, I guess, are required to have a code of ethics, and do we need a code of ethics? Sir?
You're not required to have one. Do you need one? Well, I guess that's for you guys to answer that question. Nobody, you didn't ask me the question I thought you were going to ask me, which is, what's the legal effect of these if we adopt them?
Well, that's, I'm concerned what the legal effect is if we don't, that's both.
Okay.
Thank you.
So if you, if you adopt, if you adopt the code of ethics and you allege that a fellow council member violates the code of ethics, that really doesn't, it doesn't mean that anything illegal has happened, per se? I mean, in the sense that you're not going to make this a misdemeanor offense or something, you know, I guess, I suppose you could, but, but, but it's simply going to be kind of guidelines. So if somebody breaks the guidelines, then the remedy would be presumably some kind of formal censorship motion from the rest of the city council, which would be a way of memorializing everybody else's displeasure with that particular city council member. But, you know, these are, you guys are elected officials, so it doesn't set up any kind of impeachment or anything like that.
It even says that the mayor has a responsibility to call out in one of them, and I don't remember which one it was, and frankly, I don't want to do that. That's not my job, I wasn't elected to do that.
Well, yeah, you can, if you want to adopt something like this, you can, you can craft it to say anything, I mean, anything you want, really, and, and it can be as broad or as narrow as you want it to be. It's just basically almost like an agreement that the city council is sort of agreeing among themselves that they'll conduct their activities a certain way, that's really what it boils down to, so it's sort of a way of memorializing that understanding. I've usually seen it adopted in situations where you've got deep division, let's say, and, and maybe some interpersonal conflict among the city councils, and that, sometimes this is, is advanced as sort of a remedy of that, because without sort of rules, people sometimes don't know how to interact with each other. But no council that I've served with up here has had that problem that I'm aware of, so they, they've never adopted one.
Well, one of these even says that if you, you have to sign it, if you won't sign to agree to it, you can't serve on any posts.
Yeah.
Kind of really ties their hands, so I, I would.
I don't, I don't think we need it, myself. I think we get along good.
I don't think we need one. I think if, if the time comes up when we all can't deal responsibly and ethically and fairly with each other and treat each other just like we want to be treated, I think we then need to, we can talk about it, but quite frankly, maybe it's too late at that time.
I, I guess the other thing I should say is that these also sometimes serve kind of a public messaging purpose, too. I mean, it's, it's similar to like a mission statement sometimes where you're sort of saying to the public, "We're publicly affirming that we're going to operate, you know, ethically, et cetera." You can decide how much, you know, that's worth necessarily, but that's, that's the other purpose of these things.
So if I say to Tom, I'm going to use you as an example, sir, since you sat in this seat at one time, "I will view my contact through the, my conduct through the eyes of those watching my action to build and maintain the public's confidence." I can understand that, but Tom, do I go to you as, as equally, do they have a responsibility? Is it just on us?
You're talking about the language of the code of ethics, it's only directed towards your conduct, not the public's conduct.
Yeah, they don't have to sign the agreement.
And you can't serve in any committees.
My, my original thought when I, when I saw this, when I, I thought of ethics, and I'm, I'm thinking, you know, oh, the thought just left me now, conflict of interests, things like that, possibly working for people that we've signed contracts with or things like that, I mean, after you leave the, I don't know.
Those are laws.
Yeah, that's already covered in law.
They're legally enforceable, and they're reflected in our municipal code as well.
So those are currently in the municipal code?
Yeah, and we are, you know, you also are subject to self-imposed ethical rules that are contained in the municipal code. For example, there's a rule about your relationship to individual employees in terms of, you know, the level of, of direction that you're supposed to give employees as opposed to the city manager, that would be an example. That's, that's a rule that, that you guys have adopted for yourself, but in order to make it have a little teeth, it's contained in municipal code rather than in a code of ethics, it could be in a code of ethics.
Well, it was in some of these.
Yeah.
I don't think we need one, and that's going to be my emotion that we, no.
You got a second.
Okay, okay. They don't need a motion to not do something. They don't need a motion to say we're not going to do anything. Is there any public comment on this item?
Yeah, Dave Matthews here. I wouldn't expect a lawyer to come up with this, but Mr. Thomas, I would expect you maybe come up with this. About three thousand years ago or more, more or less, a guy named Moses came down from a mountain and had a good code of ethics, I think it was ten of them. Anyway, I won't go any further than that, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Matthew, I'll see you Sunday morning, sir.
Now she's not covered, my wife, okay, everybody, or my husband, okay? All right, so the fact is that we're not going to take any action on this, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, the next item. There was no other public comment, was there? Okay, the next item, discussion of the city, of the, the Rich Crest City Council in regards to the water use of the fountain located at the City Hall Kerr McGee Community Center Complex, Mr. Patton.
Water again.
Yep.
Water, 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 okay. So, like Mrs. Mayor said, this is an item that was put out at the request of the mayor, just to have a discussion on the use of water at, at the fountain here at the City Hall Kerr McGee Sports, or Kerr McGee Community Center Complex. So I'll give you a little bit of information. Okay, first of all, I just want to give you a little background of how the city is conserving water, since the drought issue came up and the, the state laid, laid mandates and ordinances on, and the water, you know, the local water district as well. The city's been adhering to all state and local water ordinances, and there's some areas of the cities that, that were not required to comply, but we do anyway because we recognize as a city that we have a water issue, and we want to be a good neighbor to the rest of the people in the valley that have, have the same water issue, so we, we adhere in all areas. In addition to that, in all of the city-owned facilities, we've gone to water conserving fixtures in the facilities such as the toilets and the sinks, the showers, and things like that to also conserve water. That's really the areas that we can contribute, but, but the main thing that the public should know is that we're adhering to everything that they have to adhere to, within the city or without, outside of the city. This is just a, a little graph about the, the study done on this, on the, the fountain itself by our wastewater and engineering departments in a collaborative effort. It just shows, as you can see, the top chart is the evaporative monthly totals for each month of the evaporation weight in inches, they measured the amount of inches that water would evaporate in the, in the pond area and the fountain, and then the daily average in the same time period, and you can see June and July at peaks, of course, because it's hotter and more, there's more evaporation. So that's just a little chart to kind of demonstrate how much the, the water's evaporating. What, what that chart equates to is the fountain water usage is about twenty-one thousand two hundred and twelve gallons per year. Now, that sounds like a lot to us, but in reality, if you look at the months here, on the average water use of one person in a household per year, it's five thousand, fifty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-five gallons, that's per person per household, so that's well over double, which, which this means the fountain uses less than half, about forty point six, four percent per year of water compared to one person, so one person uses sixty percent more water than that fountain uses per year. One person. So that kind of puts it in perspective, sounds like a lot of water, but really, it's, it's only using forty percent of what one person in this valley uses per year. So, what happens if we actually turn off, turn the fountain off? Well, it's, it's like a pool, and I know I have a pool in my backyard, and what happens is, my pool guy tells me if you drain your pool and let it sit over the winter time and refill it, the possible problems you have are the plastering will eventually crack and be destroyed, the pump system and the, and the chemical feeding system will deteriorate due to non-use, because we have to remember these, these, these pumps and systems are made to be wet, are designed to be wet all the time. This will result in thousands of dollars in repair to restart the fountain in the future if you leave it set for a significant amount of time. I'm not saying it would happen overnight, but it will happen, and, you know, one suggests to us, why don't you just put dirt in and use it as a planter? Well, if you go back and try to restart it, you're looking at, you know, just a rough estimate to restart, if, if you have to replace pumps and systems, replastering, easy ten to fifteen thousand dollars to, to, just to restart and get it up and going again. And that's it, really, for, for that. I, I hope that just kind of explains what the, what the water use is, and I don't want to say insignificant, but compared to forty percent of what one person uses per, per year, that kind of gives you an idea of what, what it is.
Now, we, Freedom Park is irrigated with, with our well, right?
Correct.
It's not city water.
Correct.
Is, is our well water what goes into the fountain?
Correct.
So we're not using any city water for the fountain either?
Right, and as the mayor said before, it's still water, you know.
It's, it's still water, that's true.
But it's not potable water, but it's, it's still, it's still water, it's untreated water.
It's untreated water.
Right, and, and, so I guess the council decision is a significant, a significant enough amount of water to be concerned about, or is the aesthetics of having the fountain there and this Kerr McGee City Hall Complex, are the aesthetics important enough for us to leave it there and have a showcase? Because, because really, this is the nicest area in the community for, for public use. So, my, as you can see in my staff report, my recommendation is to leave the fountain alone due to the insignificant, in my opinion, amount of water that's used, and I personally like it, and I think the community personally likes having a area, when people come to town, they can say, "Wow, this is where the city does business, and it's a nice park area," and, and also I want to stress, there's, there's nothing in, there's nothing in any of the ordinances from the state down to the local level that, that prohibits fountains. It's, it's, we're not breaking any rules, we're not breaking any ordinances, it's perfectly legal and, and okay with both the state and local ordinance.
I'd like to make a comment. I don't know how many of you know where the State Department of Water Resources, oh, I'm sorry, LA DWP's building is in Los Angeles. They have sixteen fountains going right now, sixteen.
I would guess that's more than one, one person uses.
That's probably used more than one. Doesn't mean that because they do that, we should, but I'm just trying to understand these are.
Put it in perspective, right.
Well, and I had a constituent bend my ear the other day, he says, "I went over to Bakersfield the other day," says, "All the lawns in Bakersfield are green," you know, "and, and ours are all semi-brown or brown." So he's saying, "Why are we under such a mandate and other communities aren't?" I said, "Other, some other communities are, it just depends on, on how they fell in the, in the thing, so."
It also depends on what lawns you're talking about. The Department of Water Resources has a ban on irrigating median strips and lawns in median strips, which are very visible, but.
We don't have that.
Yeah, Mr. Patton's correct that the rule allows for water in recirculating fountains, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Well, it's just like a pool, basically.
Right, it's about the same evaporation rate as a pool.
Yeah, and, and we haven't been mandated to fill in our pools, so.
Again, forty percent of what one person uses an entire year.
Quite honestly, when, when I walk by this area, I mean, if there are people in Freedom Park, a lot of times, they're, they're right around the fountain. I mean, I, I do think it gets, I mean, I wouldn't say used, because people aren't jumping in there swimming, but, I mean, it's, it's being admired by people, people sit by there and they, you know, they'll splash each other or something like that, have some fun around it, I mean.
We're, we're actually pretty, getting pretty booked on our swim lessons this year, so we're thinking about using it for overflow.
Nice, the kiddie pools.
Yeah.
Well, you know, as on the council, when we built this facility, and, and it got tagged Toshmore Hall and criticized by a lot of people in the community, and yet, when they had guests coming to town, they'd come down and show it off, so, you know, I, I just, I just think that the, the benefits of the fountain outweigh any water usage we've got there, it's not like it's taking my bath water away or anything, so I'm in favor of leaving it the way it is.
I'm, I'm in favor of it, too, I just think it's, it's one of the additives that allows me to do one of the commissions that I am mandated to do, and that is to bring a husband and wife together in matrimony, and it helps in the backdrop of my pictures outside of my mugshot, so I, I think we should keep it there.
Do you perform marriages in the gazebo?
Gazebo?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we get, we get a lot of weddings because of the gazebo, because of the backdrop of the, the fountain and the gazebo, all the time, people tell me that, yeah.
And it occupies the kids, it keeps them busy.
Keeps them busy? Any other council comment? Any public comment?
Maybe some baptisms.
Mr. Matthews.
Dave Matthews. I commend Mr. Patton for his presentation here. We had discussed this before, I think in the ad hoc water.
Three different times, yes.
Yeah. Committee or something. And I, before this came up again, I read a letter to the editor and somebody who complained about it, and I immediately realized that they didn't really look into it that deeply because it is not only a, a physical attraction, it also is an emotional attraction, because if you sit out there and you hear that water, it gives you a relaxing feeling and a moment of, if it's not too hot, a moment to reflect and, and just relax, especially, you know, in the summertime, because there is a little cooling breeze usually comes off of that. And occasionally, it does serve as a kiddie pool. I've seen kids in there. So, I, I agree with your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
From what I remember of the ad hoc water committee.
Would you, would you identify yourself?
My name's Jim Heiser, 1768 West Bowman. The numbers are off by like a factor of three to seven because of wind and some other things. It still takes it up to only like three people or something of that nature. So, from a park standpoint, it's fine. It did come down to the, the concerns of presentation in a crisis environment, that you're not acting as if you're in a crisis, which we supposedly are, or we may be taken over by the state and not allowed to think for ourselves. So, that was the main concern, I thought, that came up with the fountain, is that we, we took no supportive action of the GSA's concerns and the ongoing property devaluation that's going on in the town. According to one source, there's possibly a ten percent property devaluation because of the water crisis and the grass needing to die and the other things. So, it's an ongoing issue still in town, that we are forcing people to devaluate the property. Why isn't the city, you know, whatever?
Actually, based on, on recent sales, property values are going up.
I'm gonna put my glasses on. Really, Stan?
I, I said that.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we've heard from other sources, they've gone down.
I sold two houses in the last forty-five days, so.
Oh, okay, so you're lucky.
And my son sold one, and he actually sold it for more than he listed it for, because they had lost the three previous ones they tried to get, so they made even an offer higher than the listing price.
Okay.
That's just personal experience.
I, I think at the Economic Outlook Conference, there was a real estate, a Realtor who, who made a presentation and talked about the rising prices in homes and talked about the number of sales. There were some areas of the community that weren't selling as quickly as others, but it was a positive forecast, so.
Yeah, Mrs. Mayor, there's, I sold real estate for many years, and that's always the case.
Yep.
There's other, is it sell better than others, timeframe-wise?
Bear in mind that the, the drought, the current drought conditions are really a separate issue from the overdraft conditions. The overdraft is really a chronic thing that's been affecting this, this particular basin well before the drought. The drought condition will eventually pass, but if we keep using water at the same rate, the overdraft condition won't pass with the drought necessarily. So, overdraft is something you would, you would measure over fifty years instead of a couple. So, I, you know, this, this issue with the fountain and the public messaging associated with that really, I think, has to do with more the drought, I think, than the overdraft.
It has to do with the twenty-six percent mandatory reduction in water usage, or some significantly large fine, like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a day or some, you know, it's CA, so it's, it's up there unbelievably high, and we're gonna do this and that.
But, but see, the water we're putting in the fountain is not coming through the water district, so.
We understand. It's not coming from, through the water district right now, yes.
And they're the only ones mandated to cut back.
At this point, they're being mandated by a certain group. The GSA's being mandated by another.
They are not, they are only mandated, mandated by the Department of Water Resources.
Right.
And it's a state agency. They are not mandated by the GSA, by this group, or by anybody.
Yet.
Well, we're talking about what is happening right now, sir.
Yes.
Okay, is there any other comment?
Earl Wilson, I'm a resident of Lone Pine in Anillo County and a frequent visitor to Richcrest.
Yes.
And quite a few of you know me. We've spent several thousand dollars probably now discussing the fountain. What's the name of the park?
Freedom Park. Freedom Park.
Okay. And you also have a memorial out there to a deceased soldier, and you can hear this fountain from that point. And I go out there every once in a while. I've been out and walked through the flags and everything else. Don't turn the fountain off. Next time you go to LA, stop by DWP's fountain and fill up one of them water bottles and come up and pour it in there. There are other ways to fix that, too. You could cut down on the volume a little bit, where it's not shooting quite as high in the air, or you can do what DWP did with the balls on their aqua, on their reservoirs. And there's some interesting effects that go on when they move around. They form a crystalline shape, they go in hexagons and stuff, so that could be another thing. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Earl. Any other public comment?
Did he suggest we put balls in the fountain? Is that what he suggested?
Okay, so, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
It was just a discussion item, I don't think we did.
Well, the recommendation was no action be taken.
Just a recommendation.
Is that it? Then no action is taken? Okay. Wow. And it's not even eleven o'clock yet. Okay. Committee reports. City Org.
City Org, I guess that's me. We've been discussing trying to get broadband throughout town. The last meeting, MediaCom showed up, and they made a presentation there. In the process of getting ready, spent a lot of money in this community in trying to get fiber optics throughout the community, so that was a, kind of a nice thing to hear from them, that maybe, I was a lot more encouraged at this last meeting than the meeting before, because we weren't sure exactly how we were going to be able to fund getting fiber optics through. But, now MediaCom will be trying to put it through their conduits. They will not be running it from the conduit up to the house. So, you won't have fiber optics at your house unless you run it from their station up to your house. But, but they're gonna be spending a lot of money improving, improving cable. And that, you know, Dave Matthews mentioned his call to Frontier. We were experiencing, my store uses what used to be for Horizon for internet service, and our, our computers for U-Haul rely on internet service, and our, and our credit card machines rely on internet service, and we were having sporadic internet service. So, I called the eight-hundred number, everybody, everybody got a letter from Frontier saying they were taking over April first, and here's an eight-hundred number. And the gal said, well, you are aware that we're going through a transition, aren't you? Like, gee, cut them some slack. I says, well, this is having an extremely detrimental effect on my business, when eighty percent of my business is credit cards, and we can't run a credit card through today. She says, well, our IT is working on it. And that, that was, I heard her clearly, I didn't have a problem like you that I couldn't hear what she was saying. I heard her quite plainly, and she was very blunt about it. So, I'm so far not impressed with Frontier taking over Verizon. But anyway, hopefully MediaCom is gonna follow through with their promise that they're gonna improve their service throughout the community. And that's about it for City Org.
Okay. Infrastructure Committee, Jim and Mike?
That's me, too.
I didn't make it, so.
Our only item on the Infrastructure Committee was talking about the sumps, mainly the one on Norma Street that we, because it used to be called the Kersmaire Sump, it's now Richcrest property, so I think we're calling it the, what's the name of it now? I, I call it the Norma Street Sump, but I think there's a specific name for it. But, anyway, we were talking about how, how much that needs to be enlarged to meet the, the flood control areas. So, we discussed that in detail, and it really probably needs to be about twice as big as it is right now. But, we didn't make any, it's gonna take some money. So, at least we're looking at it.
Okay. Ad hoc Water Committee, at the last meeting we had, we decided that we were going to ask for the cost of putting zero scape, taking out the grass and getting zero scape in Denny's Park. And that was our last action item, and since it's an ad hoc committee, Jim, you and I have talked about discontinuing meeting since we are at that point. We have done what we were requested to do. Did you want to continue it?
I mean, really, we just need to put together kind of a report to, to present to council with, with some options and some, some data on what we can do to...
But that would come back through, through the committee or through staff?
You know, I mean, we could even meet administratively to just look over it, maybe before it comes to the council, but.
You had at one time talked about maybe taking out some of the grass out in the parking lot out here.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's what Peggy was talking about. So, we're having, we're, we're getting some numbers on what it would cost to zero scape, and we're gonna...
I thought she was talking about Denny.
Yeah, we're gonna kind of use that...
Denny's is what we're getting the costs on.
But it's gonna come with a formula that we could apply to other places. Isn't that right, Peggy?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we got that little section, I think it's, I think it's gone brown now, hasn't it, Jason? Out there, kind of sticks out into the parking lot. I have to always drive around it to get to where I'm going, but, out in the east side towards the, the car wash.
Peter's going through surgery next week, so he'll, it's gonna be a little bit.
Oh, okay.
So, are we gonna do that in a, in another committee meeting? Do you want to meet just for that, or just, just meet ourselves to look over it, or?
Please. That's what I thought, we were gonna bring it back to council after your report.
Yeah, I'm, I'm starting to remember some of this now. Thank you.
Okay. That's why I thought we had adjourned then the committee, with no longer needed to meet. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so if you'll take that off, ma'am. Thank you. Okay, parks and rec and quality of life?
We didn't formally have a meeting, but you've heard some of the things that are going on, that Parks and Rec and Quality of Life are doing. So, they're keeping us pretty posted as to what's going on.
Okay. Okay, ad hoc?
Did not meet. Nothing to report.
Okay. The Action Committee.
Action Committee. Oh, we changed when, Madam Mayor and Council, we changed when we're going to meet, and that meeting is now gonna be biannual. Because we were able to discover that, according to the police department and school participation, that the peak of the time, peak of the issues that come up are at the beginning of school and the end of school. So, there's no need to continue to meet with two or three of us and nothing really happening.
Okay. So, you will change that on our agenda, then?
It is. It is.
Oh, sorry, thank you. I wasn't on the committee, so I didn't read it. My apology.
Finally, third Tuesday of the month. Which month?
We do need to find that part, yes. Good catch, Miss, Miss Meyer. Good catch. I have it on my phone that...
It does say September, so it must be September and March?
I need, I need to check. It's on my phone, I don't want to take the time to do it now. And I can get with you later, Ms. Rika.
Okay, ICVD.
And they are, we did not meet because they are working on the sign to, that council was kind enough to assist them in. So, we did not meet, and they are working right now, they're talking.
Okay, other committee boards or commissions?
We've got two.
Go.
Okay. First of all, KernCog. At our last KernCog meeting, we got a report on how many cities and districts are having tax and bond items on the next two elections, June and April, and December. And it's amazing how many are trying to raise taxes or pass bonds. And also, just for your information, the mayor of California City was re-elected to, as the chair of KernCog for one more year. And that's it for KernCog. We had a salt nutrient meeting today. We have to present a report to...
Lahotten.
Lahotten, at their June meeting. And the, the one that's been working with us on there had recommended that we use one of two companies to come up with that report. And one was Todd, and the other was RMC. The water dis, well, the committee felt that, considering all the flack that is going, going around town about the Todd report, that we shouldn't have Todd do that report. So, we are, we are using RMC. Their bid for this report is fifty thousand dollars. It's proposed that we split that fifty-fifty between the water district and the city of Richcrest, since this, this applies a lot to the sewer, although, although the salt nutrients are not reported from the sewer, because there's really no seepage down to the ground. But, anyway, I, I was asked to ask if we could put this on the council agenda for the next meeting to approve a twenty-five thousand dollar allocation. The water district has agreed to be the lead agency on that. They will sign the contract with this company. They want to do it as a, they don't have time to go out to, to bid. They need to use this as a sole source. But, I told them I could not commit the city. I thought the city would be willing to split the cost with them. They're, they're being very generous, I think. So, and the Navy did the preliminary report. It took Lahotten eighteen months to get back with their comments about the preliminary report. Now, they want a next phase by their June meeting. I guess it's in Bishop. And so we kind of have a deadline to get this done. So, can we put that on the agenda for the next meeting to approve that?
Absolutely.
Or at least discuss it? Okay. And that's it for salt nutrients.
Any other action committee reports? Okay, then it would be the City Manager's report.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I attended the Tac Committee this morning at the, at KernCog, and they mentioned that, and we'll have to take this into account for our budget, that they've already been told by the state for anyone planning their budgets for next year to, though, though they haven't actually come out with the final spreadsheet as far as allocations, but for budget planning purposes, to make sure we reduce our budgets by ten percent for TDA allocations. That'll affect both transit and the TDA money that would, article A money that would go to rooms.
Yeah, that goes along with my report of a couple of months ago, where they, well, actually, last month, two months ago, they stated told KernCog to cut it by X number of dollars, and then last month it was three times that. So, the state's overcommitted on their money for transit and, and transportation, and so they're reneging on it now.
Okay. Mayor and council comments. Jim, do you want to go first?
I just want to thank the staff for the excellent, we've seen excellent reports from, from many different parts of the staff today. So, just a general thank you to, to everyone who, who worked hard for, for today's meeting. Thank you.
Okay, I'll go next. Okay, I'll go next. Um, I, I wanna thank staff, too, for the reports, and I, I encourage us to keep this up. I feel like, um, I'm gonna be honest, I feel like a mushroom sometimes. I feel like I don't know what's going on. I said in the last, um, Mejorl meeting when we were talking that they knew more about the budget and what was going on than I did. And I felt like that they were doing a marvelous job, and I'm so very proud of what they're coming up with. Whatever their final report is, I'm, uh, I feel like I don't know what's going on. And so I'm gonna ask, for this will be my seventh request for the municipal code to be on our agenda. I want it so we know what's going on all over.
What, what, what exactly do you want?
I want the municipal code, as I said, and I've written it and said it, I wanna be able to address how we deal with the budget, both from the council, because last year, when I asked if we could have input to the budget process, Dennis told us, according to the municipal code, that both the finance director and the city manager, in conjunction with the department heads, prepare the budget to present to city council. I felt like it was, would have been good for city council to understand a committee, um, to understand why the department heads were making the requests that were made. I'd like to be able to participate. I have a finance committee, or people participate in that budget process, so we understand, and when we come, when it comes back to us, all hundred and fifteen pages, that we understand where we are. It's, and that, those people participating in the committee can do that. I'd like to make sure that we are not, and I know you aren't doing it on purpose, you're doing what the municipal codes says, but I think the municipal code doesn't do jus, justice to council and, and staff at this time regarding the budget. There may be other items because I'm sure we haven't read it.
So, so you would like us to present you, and I, I assume, well, let me, assuming this is coming from the, the city council as a whole, you'd like a, a discussion item on there that includes the relevant portions of the municipal code, uh, plus maybe an explanation of the process? And then the city council can have a discussion of whether or not that process is appropriate or whether they wanna make changes?
Yes.
Is that the idea?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Eddie?
Um, I would concur, uh, with our, uh, that we wanna thank staff for a great job. Outstanding job tonight, and to continue on our transparency, uh, as a, a chamber, as a council, that we continue to move forward. And to say, that's it.
Sir?
I, I think the presentations that were great. Um, that being said, I'm gonna expand on what Peggy just said. I requested the last meeting that the municipal code be put on the agenda, and it wasn't. And I specifically wanna make a modification. Um, I know it's been years since I graduated from college, but I graduated with a business degree and a minor in economics and accounting. And I still don't understand, the presentation that was made, uh, at the six-month deal, how we can be six hundred thousand dollars under budget and our funds don't go up. Um, I've heard rumors around town, uh, which, which brings into question transparency. I don't think a budget adjustment and a budget cut, I think they're the same thing. Um, so I, what I would propose on the, on the, and I talked to the water district manager today when I was at the nutrient thing, and I would propose that we change the municipal code, uh, specifically, that when it comes to the budget, that the city manager and the finance director prepare the budget under the direction, uh, a direction of a city council finance committee consisting of two city council members. That's how it was done thirty years ago. And, uh, so at least two of us, when it was brought to the council, had intimate details of the ca, of the budget. Um, and I don't know how you can, i- if, if the council has to approve the budget, I don't understand how you can make adjustments to the budget without the city council approving them. And maybe I'm wrong, but, uh, but I, I just, I just don't understand, um, the concept of the six hundred thousand dollars at, at the last presentation. And, um, I ju, I just think, Peggy made the comment about a mushroom. I was told when I was in the city council years ago by a staff member, well, we treat the council like mushrooms, we keep them in the dark and throw crap on them. And that's how you grow mushrooms. So, um, and I'm, I'm starting, I'm feeling that way myself right now. I'm sorry I feel that way, but when it comes to the budget, that's the way I feel. And, uh, the budget should make, should make sense, and, uh, if, if you're, if you've got a, got a balanced budget, and you're gonna come under it by six hundred thousand dollars, then your general fund balance, I think, should go up six hundred thousand dollars. And it didn't, it went down. So that money had to go somewhere, and I don't know if it was the adjustments made in September by staff, and, and we talked about at that meeting that those, that, that adjusted budget should come back to the council. We, we never see it. And I just think that we, we need to have a little more information about the budget. And, uh, I think, I think that's all I've got to say. So I, I second Peggy's request that municipal code be put on there, but I wanna specifically modify the municipal code as I discussed it.
Okay. Then I think we are ready for adjournment. Somebody make the motion, please.
You don't, you, just hit the gavel.
We're done. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.